You walked out.
Okay, people, it is seven o'clock. This is the Enfield Planning Board. They are meeting tonight, December fourteenth. And we have all board members present. Let's introduce ourselves, starting from my left with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Kate Plumley Stewart.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Craig Conner.
Okay, Curtis and Alternates. Let's see. We have Celia Fiero, Lisa Tucker, Liz Socelli from The Valley News, and Mary Lembeck. I hope I haven't butchered those names too much. First thing on our agenda tonight is comments from the public or anything that is not on our agenda. If anyone from the public has anything they would like to speak to the planning board about that's not already on the agenda. Nobody here? People on Zoom, any concerns, any topics? No? Okay. Next, we have two sets of minutes that we really need to look at. At our previous meeting, we had table the October twenty-sixth meeting minutes. And then today, we have the November ninth meeting minutes. Let's do the October twenty-sixth first.
Just so you guys are aware, obviously Whitney is not here, but she's able to watch the recording that we're doing right now. So just make sure you use the line number, page number, and she'll get the changes and corrections that you have.
Sure. Well, I always want to call it Quin of Art or whatever. On the recording, when you're watching it, what I found, it seems that if the people that are remotes, one knew the microphone, so they don't get background noise. But also if they mute or whatever you want to call it their video, when you watch it online, you just get the board members. Otherwise, you get whoever has their video open, at least half the screen is showing.
I know, yeah.
And it's extremely distracting.
We haven't figured out a solution.
You can pin it.
I've got it pinned.
Okay, because I did that last time at the end when Dan mentioned it. And it ought to, because anybody who's in is a member of our.
I've been pinning it religiously, but still, people when they watch it back are having that problem.
I think it's when the person at home has their video picture.
Susan, you were saying that last night, the people that are joining us remotely.
If you're at home and somebody else has their cameras on, you can only see half the screen. You cannot see what's going on. And as a member of the ZVA, I am totally opposed to Microsoft Teams because it doesn't work as well as Zoom. And I've said it over and over again. But the people at home have to have their cameras turned off.
Which is what we have right now, so it should be working great right now, so.
It's the recording, though, that is, because I've been using this for years and it's not a problem for the functionality, it's the recording that cuts.
Right, right, it must be just the way it's.
Well, it has, I think it's how it reads with the owl together.
Yeah.
I would say, I think, you know, the recording should have full functionality. You know, a lot of people are going to go back to the recording if they haven't been here. Sometimes I will go back to a previous meeting just to see or refresh my memory. Haven't done it with Teams, but I did that with Zoom. And I would be in favor of going back to Zoom for that reason.
Yeah, well, we were having some terrible.
Right, it's terrible.
I know, I know we had Zoom bombers.
Well, I think one of the most important things that I've noticed is that people don't speak to the camera and they don't articulate. And so if you're used to being in meetings, you kind of know to articulate. So just be cognizant of how you raise your voice so that people can hear you to be more available. Because at the end of the day, the most important thing is that they can hear you, right? Because we don't have visuals that we're not showing on the screen because we'll broadcast those. And those are easy to see because they do take up the whole screen when they do it. So I think, you know, it's nice to have the picture we want, but the most important content is the auditory content.
Hopefully Rob is still working on that project. Any other problem?
Okay, any other public comments? Minutes? Thank you. We got sidetracked. We did. So October twenty-sixth. Anybody have any comments, questions, correction? It's been a long time.
Excuse me. Sorry, miss.
I've kind of skimmed them and they look relatively okay to me.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Just the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just the twenty-sixth.
Motion made by Dan and seconded by?
By Phil, I think.
Phil.
Any, any extensions? Okay. Minutes of the twenty-sixth of October are approved as written. Next, we go to the minutes of November nine. Anybody have any questions, comments, or corrections? Yeah, I got a couple. Jim, go ahead with your comment.
Section, line one six one. Says that I asked where within the zoning ordinance this would fit and ask if they need to create a new section of the new ordinance. Then line one six two, same thing. Section, sort of word. To line two twenty-eight. See, with line two twenty-nine, he said that he felt was likely in the range of eight hundred to twelve hundred people. I'm not sure why the range didn't get, didn't enter. Should be eight hundred to twelve hundred. And then the next sentence kind of misconstrues what's saying. Said there was also a recent proposal for one hundred and fifty dwelling units on, and it should be seventy-five acres, which would double in time to have three hundred plus units. This would increase village population by six to seven hundred people within a short amount of time.
So the word increase?
Yeah, so this would, and then insert, increase the village population by six to seven hundred people, strike the word living within, and strike the word the village in, to read, living within a short amount of time.
Living within the village.
The village, yes, sorry. And then similarly, sentence down at two forty-two. Dot, 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 they will see more housing units come onto this system gradually over the next few years. Think you could strike, he said they may also get, strike that.
What line are you on?
Two forty-three, four three. But with a large lot that may have multiple homes added, those will be built rapidly.
I had one on line two forty-nine. The sentence starts with Ms. Stewart, Ms. Stewart said the developers are not here and the word should not be they, it should be we, should not be discuss, should not be discussing the conceptual, or we should not discuss.
Yeah, good catch.
Because that's us.
Anything else?
Line one forty-eight. The first not should be removed, so it should read, for a small, quick update, and they have discovered it is not, there's two nots in there, so just remove the first one. That's all I did.
Anyone else? Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Kate, seconded by Brad, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Minutes are approved as amended. Next, Select Board Report.
I was ill and I was not at the December Select Board Meeting. The, I did take a look at the video, so there were Conservation Commission warrant articles that you'll be talking about today, so I won't belabor that point other than to tell you it didn't look like it had the support from the Select Board thus far, but there was no vote, they're going to be waiting to that upcoming meeting. There was a discussion on changing a personnel policy on vacation accrual. The dedication for the town report, the discussion was on taking ideas. So if someone has an idea, if you want to share it with one of your Select Board members, we'd appreciate it. Chatted about the water and sewer rates and did some donation acceptance, year-end transfers, which is pretty normal, and rounded it out with some administrative items. So it was a short meeting, if anybody wants to take a look at the full meeting, it's on YouTube.
Okay, thank you, Kate.
Question for, says a select board. What's the status of the Johnson Drive Committee?
I was not in the meeting and I don't think they, unless I was in the town. Yeah, I didn't see it, so I left.
We had our first meeting.
Oh, there you go, right there.
We had our first meeting.
Who's the chair?
Nate, can't remember his last name.
Oh, Miller.
Miller.
Yes.
Yeah, Miller.
Yeah, super guy. And so, yeah, it was just an educational meeting for the seven members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're posting our agenda dates.
Posting the agenda. We're scheduled to meet twice a month, starting in January.
Okay.
Yeah. And the plan is to, you know, get all of the butters involved and then somehow get the public's input, right? And talk to as many different groups in town as we can.
Okay. I got some info, I will talk to you afterwards, but.
Awesome, okay.
Jim, were you raising your hand?
Yes. Did the selectmen, have they made a decision how they're going to proceed to evaluate the short-term rental ordinance?
That was not discussed. I think we were, they were, we were originally hoping for feedback from here. There was no feedback, so I think it's sitting in limbo right now. Did you make any modifications?
We don't want it.
Well, no, but I think it's, because it's a mixture, the idea was to ask for inputs since you guys deal with, obviously, parts and pieces of it. So if somebody had something they saw that could be an improvement or a suggestion, we wanted to have that collaborative discussion.
The directive was for us to individually email Ed and he was going to put something together and get it to you guys.
Yeah, so, and that was not on that one. We have a pretty packed agenda coming up, I talked briefly about it. So I think you're, I don't know if that will be on there, but it's, it's going to be a busy last. Usually, often, we can skip the meeting before the holiday or make it short. I don't think that's going to happen. But if you want to join us, it is December, you guys, this is like all the fun you can possibly have. The nineteenth, yeah.
We'd like to be there.
You're going to be here?
The Master Planning Task Force will be there.
Yes.
For brief presentation.
Members of us will be there. Is that it on Select Board Report? Any other questions for Kate? Okay. Next, we have three hearings. I'm going to read the warning first and then I'll explain a little bit about the procedure for those who have never been before our group. So let, the first hearing will be land use case number P twenty-two dash twelve dash oh one. Nick Lupus has applied for boundary line adjustment and voluntary lot merger approval for his properties located on Lake Street. The parcels in question, map thirty, lot seventeen and nineteen is located within the R-one residential zoning district. Next, we have land use case P twenty-two dash twelve dash oh two. Susan Brown has applied for voluntary lot merger approvals for her two parcels located at or near fifteen Depot Street, at thirty-four, lot forty-six. The parcels in question are located within the community business CB zoning district. And finally, land use case P twenty-two dash twelve dash oh three. Kirby Banel of Energetic Edge LLC has applied for minor site plan review approval to operate a twenty-four-hour fitness facility as well as a shake and T-bar at five oh five US Route Four. The parcel in question, map fifteen, lot ten dash four, is located within the Route Four zoning district and is owned by Indian River LLC. The two boundary line adjustments and lot, voluntary lot mergers are by right, which means that you're coming before the planning board and we basically take a look at it and we say yes. There's no debate, there's no vote. Well, I guess we will take a vote, just to be formal about it. But there's no chance that we will not grant those boundary line adjustments. The third hearing is for a minor site plan review. I will ask the applicant to come and sit at the table next to Kurt, or between Kurt and Rob, and tell us what they are proposing. And then we will go over the site plan criteria that may apply. And then the, we will open it up for a topic from the public. Then we will deliberate. And we will either grant the site plan approval as presented, deny it, or grant it with certain conditions. So let's take up Nick Lupus's boundary line adjustment and lot merger first. And sir, you are?
My name is Ronald Tabor, I'm a licensed land surveyor in New Hampshire.
Okay, Ron.
Yeah, I have, I have one little change since my plan I've submitted. It's a very minor change, I think you'll, you'll see what it is. On Mr. Tucker's plan on my first submittal.
Have you got copies for, are you sure I made it copy?
Yeah, I've got copies for everybody.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's hand those out because the eight and a half by elevens.
Yeah, this will help you a little bit. If you look at Mr. Tucker's, Mr. Tucker's fence on my first plan, his fence was actually on Mr. Lupus's property. And it was like, I was, been removed recently, relocated onto Mr. Tucker's property. So this new plan shows the current location of that, of that fence. And you can see there's, there's quite a change between the two fences, so. That's the only change in the plan.
Okay, in my board packet, there was a survey map done for Gordon and Dorothy Murphy. Does that have anything to do with what we're talking about tonight?
I have three surveys that I have found on this. I have a Murray Stevens map from the seventies that I got up here from the, from the office, engineering office, I think it was. And this basically in the nineteen seventies shows what I found as far as the boundaries of, of the parcels on Lake Street. And it has Mr. Tucker's current, it's sort of upside down here. If we put it so that Lake Street is north like this, we have Mr. Gardner was, is now Mr. Tucker's property. It's a hundred and twenty feet, frontage long here. We have another hundred foot by hundred foot parcel that was conveyed from the town to Mr. Lupus in a deed. And then we have the Merrihew parcel on here, which it's, his name was Vern Merrihew and he conveyed, on here, he's got a hundred, a hundred by a hundred, but it's actually a hundred by eighty foot in the deed. So nineteen seventy, this was never placed in the record, okay? So Mr. Wilson is a surveyor that came along in the nineteen eighty-five, this is what created the problem. This survey in nineteen eighty-five by Alan Wilson basically looks like this. And he was, this is the area we're actually dealing with this way, okay? I can pass this around if you want to see it. But Mr. Wilson created a survey that was been in the record since nineteen eighty-five and it created a lot line right here. Now, Mr. Wilson came back in two thousand and four and did a new survey. And that line, it's this line right here that used to go down, he's changed it now, he picked up on this Vern Merrihew lot here, eighty by a hundred. So we, all of a sudden, we have two maps that basically Mr. Wilson did that have, basically messed everything up. The town has never had the tax map right on this. My client was even confused about what he owned out there. He thought he owned a hundred by a hundred and they, and they ripped him, the town ripped him off for twenty feet. But what he, in reality, owned was he owned two different lots, an eighty by a hundred and a hundred by a hundred, there's two different deeds. One, the hundred by a hundred is, is a town from the town to him. And then the eighty by a hundred is from Vern Merrihew to him. Now, this created a problem within the family and that's the reason why we're doing the lot line adjustment. Because the family for years has been, and the tax map has sort of been reflecting this original map of them having a frontage of two hundred and ten feet there. But you see in reality on my map, where the log shed is there, that's where the real line is according to Mr. Wilson's second map. So they've been thinking they own two hundred and ten feet along Lake Street. They don't, they only own a hundred and fifty-seven point seven three along Lake Street, okay? So, and now they're saying, well, what are we going to do? We got two lots out there. The septic system that was designed, I have it designed for, it falls right in the middle of the boundary line to be located right next to where the address, it says eleven thousand southeast federal. That line is about where the septic system falls. So we want to try to get the septic system on the lot. So we're going to, you know, we're going to take that lot that's an eighty by a hundred and basically cut it in half, give it to the hundred by forty feet of it, to the hundred by a hundred to the east. And then the remainder of the forty feet, we're going to give to Nick's son. So we sort of make that right as far as what they, they said, we've been paying taxes on this road frontage for, you know, a long time and it's, it's probably true, they have. So that's the purpose of this, what we're trying to do tonight.
That's complex.
I know, well, I tell you, I, you have two relatives and they're flipping properties back and forth between themselves over time. It took me a long time to figure out who actually owned, you know, that eighty by a hundred. So I mean, and, but we've got it figured out and this is the best solution that we've come up with as far as trying to create a lot out there that he can, he can build on and, and give something to his son to make it, make that right, so.
Thank you for that narrative because I really puzzled, those were all of the pages.
I know. Yeah. Well.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, so I tried to do a blow up up the top there, basically showing the final, well, we're starting with the pre, pre-adjustment merger and then the post-adjustment. So it sort of shows what's going on out there.
Okay, are you representing both of the?
I'm just representing Ms. Senior, Mr. Senior. Yes, sir.
Do we have something in writing from the junior Lupus?
No, we don't, we just, we just, the family got together and, and this is what we decided. They decide, we, they decided they wanted to do. Mr. Lupus Senior actually made the decision because he's the one that owns the eighty by a hundred, so, okay.
Rob, from our point of view, we have two different lot owners here. Should we have something from both of them that says they agree to it?
Well, there's not two different lot owners of the parcels that we're, we're dealing with. They're, they're both owned by Nick Lupus. We're dealing with giving their butler, his son, a forty by eighty foot part of, of Mr. Lupus's two parcels. That's.
This little.
People still have to accept it.
Right.
Oh, I see, yeah, I understand.
I would say to accept it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
Make that a condition on your approval?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something in the record from.
We don't want that forty dollar. I'm not going to pay taxes on, hey, come on now.
Yeah.
They want to, you know, they, Nick originally started out with only going to give him twenty feet and, you know, I sort of, sort of said, come on, Nick, come on, come on, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and they, the, the two lots are going to be conforming lots, so that's not, that's not a problem.
It's not an issue.
So, yeah, I don't see, as long as we can get a, a letter on file saying that they both are in favor of it. Yeah. I'll make a motion, we accept the merger and boundary line adjustment with the condition that there's a letter.
Seconded that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The boundary line adjustment and merger are approved as presented with the condition that the younger Mr. Lupus provide a letter to the town that he accepts the survey that you drew with whatever date is on it.
It's the, the most revised is the.
Ten thirty-one twenty-two.
Well, I just, the revised one, the one I just.
Twelve eleven.
Exactly, revised twelve eleven twenty-two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'll try to get it right, just, the blue ink or something.
Okay. Next, we have Susan Brown. So you finally got your deed from the state of New Hampshire?
No.
No?
They made a big mistake.
What did they do?
They retyped what the lawyer sent them and they put in two paragraphs the same. And we have been at Lou Barker, but I own it. I've paid for it, they cashed the check.
You have a, you have a deed.
Well, there is a deed.
Yeah.
But they, they've got to type it correctly.
Right.
So you're two copies of what it looks like.
We got.
You got that?
We have them. We got. Yeah.
In October two thousand and nineteen, I applied to buy my front yard. My garden. The Realtor didn't know. The Realtor whom Angus bought, helped Angus buy his house, didn't know that he doesn't own his entire front yard. And we've been going over this now for more than three years, but I finally own it. And it's point oh nine acres. It just doesn't seem like, would you like to see that? Anybody else want to see it?
No, we're not fully taxed.
You got it, okay.
Pretty straightforward. The state actually owns.
It's commercial.
Yeah, there's a marker there.
How many depots are there to shake their heel rope?
How long Depot Street is there to shake a hill road? The town maintains Depot Street here. They have paved here on land they don't own. And this is what. I wanted to buy.
Where the official Depot Street, the town portion ends and the state land begins is what I was curious about.
At that that marker. There's a granite marker there now. And it's been interesting. Hasn't it? So the reason I did this is I I'm pretty sure my house was built in eighteen fifty-one and I think it was built on an acre. Some of which has washed away, but I wanted to get this straightened out. So when I die, my kids don't have to. And now it's straightened out and I own it at an exorbitant cost, but I own it. And so I want to merge those two lots. And. See that everything's recorded and you said we didn't need a mylar, but my lawyer thinks we do. There will be a mylar. And oh. That's where this is at.
Yeah, you all right to give?
I'm giving one.
I'll keep one. I'll give one to Julie.
Oh, sure. There's another one here. No.
You had one given.
At least I'll get a piece of paper out of it.
I'll give you a gold star for your offer.
Yes. Any any progress? Asking Kate, any progress on town acquiring? Land underneath the ambulance building, the old depot?
Did they? Yeah, I.
Nope.
Let's let's stay on on track here.
It's the most incredible process you've ever tried to navigate.
Just just take comfort in the fact that in some very, very small way, you will get your investment back in some state service. Sometimes.
Or maybe my kids will.
Maybe your kids, who knows? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the lot merger.
I'll second it.
Accept.
Accept the lot merger.
We can't.
On Mark with math thirty-four, lot forty cents.
Really a lot line adjustment. No, it's a merger.
It's a merger because there's two lots.
There, we've been there, Curtis.
There's two lots. We're merging the two lots.
It's treated as a separate.
Right.
That little triangle is a separate.
It's a separate lot. It was a separate lot.
That's what she bought from the state.
Okay, well, I know you got the state, but I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
The state has multiple lots of ownership.
Right, of course.
This the state finally decided that they want to get rid of this. See how this line goes.
Yeah, yeah.
It goes past Angus's front. It's not within ten feet of his front porch. It goes over that one. So that's.
We're not done this saga, but we're getting one part done.
Yeah, we're just getting one part done and. It's it's been interesting, but it's marked now.
All right, Susan, thank you for coming in.
We're gonna vote on.
Oh, we got a vote.
Yeah, let's do that.
Call in the question.
What made by Dan seconded by.
Seconded by, okay, all in favor of Dan's motion. Okay, Susan, it's done. Done deal. Go home and enjoy your front yard. In two days, you'll have to shovel more snow.
I got my tractor now.
Good. All right. Final hearing of the evening is Athletic Edge L or Energetic Edge LLC. Kirby and Sean Vanel. You guys. Come on up.
You can second chair.
Kirk, please get over a little bit.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, talk to us about what you want to do and where you want to do it.
Okay, so the address is five oh five U S Route four. And we are looking to put in a twenty-four hour fitness facility. As well as a shake and tea bar as well, right at the facility.
So it's about two thirds of the gym and one third of the shake and tea bar. We've been running shake and tea bars for seventeen years. And this will be our third one, but we live in the town of Enfield now, so we're excited to be a part of the community. Really just focusing on like our shake and tea bar just focuses on giving back and we had a lot of extra space and. We've been seeing for years and hearing that there's really no fitness center from Lebanon into Plymouth to New London. And the ones that are aren't really very accommodating. So we aim to open like us, I mean, it's hard because there's a lot of different like terms with gyms. So we're really looking at like it's almost like a fitness studio business size. We're not zoned for more than, I don't know, fire coded for more than twenty-seven people in the whole space. So it's definitely going to be on the smaller side. And. The twenty-four hours was truly accommodate all the people going on Route four commuting for all the third shift, second shifts. Or people who want to go in and work out before their first shift.
Okay, and just to be clear, this is the building that was most recently Pellegrino's?
It was most recently the Miracle Thrift Store.
The thrift store.
Yeah, and prior the Pellegrinos.
Ziggy's on the side.
Yep, Ziggy's is right to the right.
Eat your pizza and then go working out.
I think I missed the thrift store era on that.
I think they're only there.
It's a bright yellow sign.
They're only there for a year.
Sure.
They did have ice cream.
Do we have locker rooms or?
Uh, we won't.
Yeah.
Uh, not right now. It'll be more of. We assume most people will be either like on their way home from work or on their way to work or going home in between. It's not really, I mean, we could have like one shower and stuff, but it's not really big enough, I don't think, to really have a full locker room.
Yeah, so you'll have your weights and things like that.
We'll have three. So right now we have three cardio. We have three cardio machines, a set of dumbbells, a couple weight. Machines. And then if someone at some point wanted to, a personal trainer wanted to teach classes, they could, but that's.
Is this gonna have an attendant twenty-four seven?
It would not. It would have a key fob system with security to know who's coming in and in and out.
But there will be staffed hours.
Yeah, it was staffed hours. So from six AM until at least two PM every day, it would be staffed.
It has a membership. That's like a club.
Yeah, so that'll be its own membership. So it's it's basically like two businesses within the same lease.
So there would be a separation between like workout area and.
We do have a wall up.
Okay.
Um, so we put a wall in between. And they have their own heating systems. They like it actually just happened that way. I guess there used to be a wall and basically we put it back.
Okay.
Can you walk from one to the other?
You can walk through one to the other. And there's actually three entrances. But two of them will be able to be open, but you can walk through. So the bathroom, there's two bathrooms in the gym side. And you actually will have to, we'll have the door open during the day when the shake and tea bar is open, so they can go through and use the bathroom. So they'll have to kind of walk into the gym. It's like a direct shot to the bathroom.
What does they shake?
Uh, we serve protein shakes and energizing teas. It's really just a a positive place for people to come in in the mornings and chat and start their day.
All right.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So with the, I'm reading as I understand that what you said, the gym section is twenty-four seven.
The other section is not.
Okay, okay, I wasn't clear in though. I was worded in your life.
Oh, that that makes sense. Yeah, no, the other section will be only be open six to two for now.
Okay.
Can't bite off more than you can chew. You gotta have like a certain amount of time. So.
I got a question for Rob. Is this actually just a change of use?
So. My ruling on it was if if it was just the shake and tea, I didn't think she needed site plan at all.
Right.
Because it wasn't nothing would change from being retail to being more.
Okay.
On-site.
Okay.
Service, or I guess you could call it.
And the hours.
Yeah, comfortable. When the shake and tea?
No, we're not open. We're closed, but not.
Okay, I told them they could open the chicken tea.
Yeah, because that would be the retail.
Okay, gym, I said, come do a minor site plan. And we did it with with Pellegrino's when they switched from being the moving market to.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we did it with Ziggy's when it switched from being the pharmacy to a restaurant. So.
Yeah.
Sort of consistent.
Big success.
It gives an opportunity to let a butter's way and if they have something that we haven't been about in a friendly forum before it turns out to an issue.
Yeah, we did. If you recall with Ziggy's, Butter wanted some screening for the patio.
Yeah.
Which I think was productive right there. Just one reason.
Right, there's a patio.
Ziggy's has a patio.
Yeah.
Wow, now I do.
Now you know.
My only question is, it's the lighting. I mean, you talk about inside lighting. It's not too much of an issue for me. It's more of any changes to external lighting?
No, we're not changing anything. It's it's.
There's external LED lighting in the gym entrance. I mean.
But it's it's set up, isn't it? We we talked about it's like. Yeah, it's pointing down and set up. It's the same as.
Yeah, it's a big saw, but.
Yeah, it's in the saw.
Yeah, and it was pretty well written already. So.
How will you enforce your twenty-seven people maximum? Could that be like an honor system type of thing or the gym just won't hold?
The gym honestly will not hold more than that.
Okay.
I mean, they'd be sitting there like wait, they'd be unhappy. They'd be sitting there waiting. I feel like most people would come back. There's not even gonna. I don't know that there's even room for like.
You wouldn't quit for twenty.
Yeah, it's a self.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's self limiting.
And we'll be able to monitor it as well. We have security cameras.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, depending on mob system, it can just not let somebody in over a certain amount. It depends on what company you go with.
That's right.
I mean, I think if someone, I mean, maybe, I mean, I know that if I was going to a gym and everything was full, I I probably would just come back. Yeah.
Can I have your machine light tonight?
Yeah, I probably would just, I mean, I think most people would be like, I'll just wait till it's like empty.
Okay.
You mentioned that you have, this is your third one. You have two others operating now or?
Yes, yeah, we have a Lebanon is nutrition on the green and we've been open since two thousand fourteen. And then we have one in New London and then we've been open since twenty twenty. So we don't have gyms in the other locations. This, we have free workouts that we host in our Lebanon one. And our New London one does not have workouts. It's it's like five hundred square feet. It's pretty small.
I've been to their Lebanon one.
Anybody on the board have any questions, any more questions? Any comments or questions from members of the public?
Hi, I'm Katie Davis. I think it's a great idea.
All right, greatly, thanks.
If it'll hold twenty-seven people, you have twenty-seven parking places?
I don't know. That's a great question. I don't know how many we had. I think we kind of looked at it and.
We we have.
He has, he has a list of them.
I count nineteen on the map.
Oh, yeah.
This was from the Ziggy's site that I gave her. And so they sort of had.
So we're the green.
The designated spots, obviously they can fight.
Yeah.
Nobody got to be enforcing, so.
There's like never any.
When I go to Ziggy's, we were at Ziggy's tonight, just plenty of spots there, so.
I I do think that if twenty-seven people are there, like twenty-four people, we're prob, they're probably coming back. Like I, I mean, there's really like there's so there's. So there's two two treadmills, an elliptical, a weight machine, dumbbells, and then there'll be like a core section and then.
Six people.
Yeah. In our, in the bar area, we only have seating for eight because it's a little bit smaller. We don't suspect the state is going to the state health inspector is gonna approve us for more than eight seats.
I think it's fair to say your other business have a lot of takeouts.
It's a lot of takeouts, a lot of grab and go. We expect this honestly to be predominantly grab and go. We have an app set up so that people can. Pay ahead time, order ahead time, grab and go. So we think that the shake and tea part will be a lot of grab and go first thing in the morning, mostly from like. Yeah, the commute like six thirty to nine.
Okay, the twenty-seventh's for fire.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like Hannaford's probably could happen eight hundred people according to the fire department, but there's no way. There's gonna be eight hundred people at the park there.
Yeah, you haven't been on Hannaford on a Friday yet.
So this room will hold eighty according to that.
Right, exactly.
All right.
I'm not.
Bigger than this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I guess all of our visitors except Liz has dropped out. Liz, do you have any questions? No, okay.
Right.
Close the public hearing. Board members. Any comments?
I recommend approval.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of approving the minor site plan as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Close. Extensions.
Good to go.
Good to go. Welcome to Enfield. We wish you.
Wait till we sign you up to do more. What committee would you like to?
Yep.
For my family.
Two weeks, two weeks is holidays.
Uh, it's gonna be a while. We got some more permits for that time.
Oh, yeah, great.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
All right, conceptual. None. Next, we get into the fun part of the meeting, zoning changes. We'll go in order as they're listed here on the agenda. So I guess Linda, are you representing the Heritage Commission?
Did I miss some reading on that? That's what I'm like, this mine, no.
What?
Was there like?
A package.
Was there a packet that I missed it? Okay. Oh, okay.
You you get to see at the same time the rest of us do.
Really like.
Several months ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take one pass at a time. We can do it.
We got this down. Yeah. It's all about getting grant money.
For the Heritage Commission, we'd like to take the three historic buildings. In Enfield Center, the Union Church, the Schoolhouse Museum and the. Townhouse and have them be their own historic district overlay. The word overlay is required because what that means is you're laying. That district on top of your current zoning and all current zoning applies to it. You you look like you're questioning.
All current zoning applies and what. Standards would be applied as to the overlay?
There are none. I have cleared this with the attorney at the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And also in originally, I was looking at. Trying to apply for certified local government status. But in talking to the people at the state, I found that. That's all federal money. And because. The New Hampshire Legislature defunded that office because they had federal money. And so. Last year, they had a total of seven hundred thousand dollars come from. The government. It took nine tenths of that to run the office and the state programs. And they had only seven seventy thousand dollars to give to all towns for a year. And that looked like just. Too much work and not enough gain. And that can they directed me to a different type of grant. That is funded. Which we already are using L chip. And and so then I. I checked with the. The older attorney, I can't remember his name, it said note somewhere, but. And asked, do I have to have any regulations? He said, no, if you just call it an overlay. It's, it's not set aside, it's just defining it. And the reason we're doing this is we really feel that going forward, there are some grants that it will. It, it will be a benefit to have these three historic buildings set aside in their own little package. Um, and if people in Enfield Center want to have. They, they have a charming main street. It would be wonderful to have them do something and. Um, and it, it would be good for Enfield Center, but they can just have another one that's residential. Houses. So these. So here is what's written. Enfield Heritage and Historic District Commission. Um, proposal for a zoning amendment for a new local historic district. Enfield Center Historic District Overlay to see if the town, th- this is proposed to be a warrant article. Um, to see if the town will vote to approve the formation of a local historic district. Oh.
Don't fix that.
Yeah, I didn't see that till right now. Um, a typo. In Enfield Center to be called the Enfield Center Historic District Overlay. This district consists of the Enfield Center Townhouse, built in eighteen forty-three. The Enfield Center Schoolhouse Museum, built in eighteen fifty-one. And the Union Church of Enfield Center, built in eighteen thirty-six. These buildings are currently designated as tax exempt. There will be no impact on the tax rate. The explanation is the goal is to help support these three historic structures. By obtaining preservation grant funding for repairs, upgrades and improvements. It should be noted that establishing a local historic district in Enfield Center using the three historic buildings below. Will in no way impact other property owners in Enfield Center. And then I've listed the three, the Union Church of Enfield Center with its address and, um. Tax map. Um, and this is supported by the Union Church trustees who have voted on this. In the Enfield Center Schoolhouse Museum, uh, per the Enfield Historical Society. And the Enfield Center Townhouse for the town of Enfield. In the local historic district will only apply to these three buildings. Owners of these three buildings have already indicated their support. Any questions?
Then, um, so when. Defining a zoning district where it's an overlay residential district, why have you? How, have we, have we ever had a district or do we have a district that's defined by? A list of lots?
Yes. We created the Shet Street District, as it were. Uh, two years ago, was it? So that the town properties, which the old, um. Public Works, uh, those two lots. So that they could be used for more intent, for a more intensively developed project. Than the current district allows. Uh, it's not an overlay, it's its own two lot spot zone district.
Tim, there are some towns in New Hampshire that don't have tax maps. It does, they just. And, and they aren't contiguous. They just list all of their old buildings in a big list. And each one is numbered. So they, you know, like we have a main street district and, uh. I, so one of the methods of doing it is to simply list the lots.
And, um, could, could we see where those lots are located in the center?
The other day, cause I had the lot numbers on it.
I have the lot numbers right here. They're, they're on this, whoops, that's not the paper.
You, you have it, it's right there. Yeah, I was gonna say, you just had it in your hand.
So Linda, if, if I remember correctly, uh, within the last month or two. I read through the handbook on local historic districts. Or forming local historic districts. And I can't remember exactly, I think it was like the Division of Historic Preservation that. Put it out and they seem to be pretty clear that. The district, you know, the zoning district or overlay required some standards. And. I, I understand that you've got conflicting information from the Municipal Association. And lawyers are meant to act as an interpretation.
Local government requires some standards. However, it was, um, the, the historic. Resources people. Who, um, who talked to me about this and also just to make sure. I got a, an appointment and a callback from the attorney. So you do not, it, um, the problem would be if it weren't an overlay, then there'd be no zoning on it at all. Okay.
That's lot number one is Center House. Right there. Lot number fourteen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the.
Schoolhouse Museum.
Schoolhouse Museum and lot number N.
So one, two, three.
Yeah. There's a town and cemetery right behind, isn't there?
Yeah. So they're not.
They're not contiguous. They're not contiguous.
And originally we looked into that and the answer was yes, we could do that. Of just listing the lots. It's if they're defined.
Is there a new requirement for L chip that you have to have a historic district?
No.
Okay, so there's no additional benefit to having a historic district because you can already apply for the same grants.
I don't think I can answer that completely because we're. We're looking at the grants and reading what applies and we might qualify for. So not having looked at them all, I can't really answer that question. But we feel that it's a step in the right direction to have them defined. And already recognize that the town recognizes that they are historic buildings. And that they're worthy of effort. Two of them are already on the national register. And these Enfield Center Schoolhouse Museum qualifies to be if. If the Historical Society decides they want to. To do that. We originally called it a triangle, but then. The discussion was that some people will hear that and take that very literally.
And mean that twelve is a part of it and thirteen.
The parts, so we thought it was cute, but I. We don't need it to be.
So, I have a couple of questions. Um, is this being presented as a petition one article? Or is this a planning board's? Was presented, um.
No, not petition.
It's a petition, so you guys are.
Not petition. If not, they could petition.
It's too recent. Tonight is the.
I know.
Is the deadline.
Right.
And so it would just have to be next year.
See, Lee, I'll take your comment after the board finishes its discussion. Anyway, anyways, it's, doesn't matter. You didn't get, you didn't have this thing to do, so. Just, well, I was surprised.
Yeah.
So are we, so is there like a set of goal, other than creating this as a goal? Is there an overarching goal, like we have a plan and a vision to develop this to be a museum? Or I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there because usually when you're trying to make a major decision on spot zoning, you have an underlying goal that you're. And a plan, okay, so what is it?
It is to put the Enfield Center Townhouse back in use.
For what? That's what I want to know.
For you to take your kid the story hour, for her to be in a play there. For people in town.
Parking?
They're in with, it's the problem. That's why we need money. We want also to be able to buy the land that is adjacent to it. It is. For sale.
For above market value.
Oh, yeah, way above.
Which we're legally barred from doing because you can't, as a town, over bake. Well, you can't, it's.
It, it's, it's already come down. It's huge amount.
I just, I, so I guess my question is, you know, what is the plan? What is the goal setting and how does this align? We're talking master planning. We just did this whole process, which we are hoping to get approved, and how does this align with the master planning and then the goals that are set, uh, for town administration?
I am so glad you asked that question. I.
Well, someone is.
In line, exactly, actually. I don't, I don't have the, um, when the, the page in our master plan talks about. How Enfield will work to preserve our historic places and et cetera.
Okay, cause I can tell you, you can't al- align exactly with goals that are given to town operations and administration because. We haven't done that goal setting for a while because of COVID. So I think that's a very important step. Because the select board is gonna be meeting, doing our goal setting and strategy, and that is going to direct overall operations. So you may find.
Plant, it's already printed in that thing.
You're talking about master planning versus operations goals. So operations goals are different. That's the day to day, right? So the master plan is the overarching vision, like a hundred thousand feet above the, up towards the thoughts. So day to day operations are things like, are we gonna allocate staff time to fill out grant, grant things, right? Like.
No.
So, but yes, because every time you do a grant or you've taken money, somebody on our staff has to do the final pieces. So you guys might write it. So I think just answering some of those questions so that people are comfortable with what their tax dollars are going for, right? So is the townhouse a priority? It is for some people and I think taxpayers have to. So if you're saying, hey. Our top priority is to redo the townhouse and people have a lot on their docket and we've listened to a lot of people come to meetings saying. Hey, you guys have too many projects going on. You know, I, I, Seeley sat in meetings and told us we had too much going on many, many times recently. And I think I've been listening to that from people. So is this an addition that we can handle on our docket for operations? And just asking the question.
Yeah, I, I would like to just kind of, for the record, say that the master plan. Does mention, you know, historic preservation, but the actual chapter. On historic heritage and preservation. Is on the docket for twenty twenty-three. So, you know, in, in general terms, yes, it's in the master plan. In specific terms, we haven't done it yet, so we don't know. And I, I have a, uh, another question for you. Is this three lot, um. Overlay going to be the only historic district? Or do you have plans for other ones?
We don't have any plans for anything else unless the people in Enfield Center say that they would like to. Do something with their, not main street, but their.
Call it main street.
Yeah.
And if they decide in the affirmative, then what standards will? Be developed? What would be?
That's in the future. I don't know. We're focusing on. The pathways we've identified. What do you mean what standards? I, I don't think this, I mean, would it take it away from the current zoning?
No, it, it, it doesn't take away from current zoning. But, uh, to go back, um, a year ago. We were looking at the village plan alternative, which had a lot of great stuff. But it had no standards by which it could be enforced. And my concern here is. A, you're proposing a zoning overlay. With no standards by which it can be judged. And B, even if the municipal association says, yeah, you can do that. Are we at the top of a slippery slope, which if you might create? Other historic districts? Are we gonna wind up with a bunch of overlays that? Are essentially meaningless from a zoning perspective because they have no standards?
That actually touches on something that concerns me greatly with what's coming up of to, to do with density. But, um, yeah. I. I'm having trouble figuring out why it's a problem to have things in current zoning.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again. What's the?
I. The, the standards that I spoke about earlier had to do with certified local government. And in other places, it was, they have lots of money. And I've been to workshops and seen what they've done with some of that. Um, however, that's not the case in New Hampshire at this time, so it's not worth the effort.
Yeah, I, 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 I get that.
Um.
Isn't she saying that the standards would in fact be the existing standards?
Yes.
Yes, right, well. Right, I mean, whatever the zoning for that area is still gonna be there. That doesn't change. But what, I think what you're getting at is one of my questions is. Right now, if this passes, you now have a historic overlay. But that's it, just a title.
Right.
So if they wanna paint those buildings green, there's no reason, nothing's stopping them. Exactly.
That's correct, and there's nothing stopping you from painting your house green.
Right, so what's the whole, but if they paint it green and then you go to get a grant. And they say, well, and the grant funder says, well, what are your restrictions on what can be done? To physically to this building or how it can be used, and you say, we don't have any.
What if they put vinyl on? That's bigger than gray.
That church already has vinyl.
That's what I'm saying.
And then my, and then my follow up is who would actually writes saying, this is what's allowed and not allowed? And who then enforces that restriction?
Would it follow the existing?
If it's a zoning overlay, it would have to be enforced. By anybody that has anything to do with zoning, which would primarily be Rob. It would be us. Um. But, but then who writes?
But they're, they're not proposing a different one right now. The, I think the question is, are you gonna come back to us and ask us for additional rules?
Yeah, because without, without rules, it's more like, what's the whole purpose?
No, that is wrong.
It's grant money. You want, you need it to be on, you really do need it to be on. I has, I've considered a part of a historic district to get a lot of grants, not just L chip, but other ones.
Wouldn't these three properties, if we grant this overlay, wouldn't these three properties actually follow our existing?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And so if, 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 if it's allowed in our current zoning, they could do it. If it's not allowed in our current zoning, they can't do it. And so if 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 it's allowed in our current zoning, they could do it. If it's not allowed in our current zoning, they can't do it.
Right, right.
Getting a grant. I don't understand the downside.
The 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 idea of an overlay is that it imposes additional standards.
No, no.
No, it doesn't.
No, no. It accepts the current standards.
But why couldn't you just apply for a grant now? I mean, I I mean, if they, if they don't give a grant money, they're going to ask, what are the, what is the restrictions? If they say there are none, then it's like.
That's, no, not necessarily.
Yeah, I think my question, that goes back to my question, though, which was, you know, typically, when you're looking to make a change, you're targeting, you have some names of grants and you know the dollar amount and the likelihood you're going to get them. And you have targeting, and so you use the word might be able to get. And I wanted to know, hey, we're targeting, you know, five grants and they require this. Because I think to me, when you're asking to spot zone something, it should be a requirement because we don't need more rules just for the sake of having rules or another words on the book. Unless there is a compelling reason and a very high likelihood we're going to get.
This doesn't add rules.
It's just more words on the book that mean nothing until you have a reason to use it.
They may mean nothing from where you sit, but to to grant, grant grantees. The fact that there has been an effort to define the historic significance and value of something starts a conversation. And originally, Kate, there was a particular grant we wanted because it allowed for purchasing land to support a historic structure. And and that that was the certified local government and the federal funds. However, in New Hampshire, it's been defunded. Yeah. So so that went away.
Wouldn't the historic designation that they, those two of the buildings already have allow you to apply for these grants?
I'm not sure they have to have those designations.
Yeah, but they do have them. So for those buildings, wouldn't that be sing? No more similar to what you're currently proposing?
You know, I can't really answer that because I don't know. I'd have to have someone from Historic Resources answer that specifically.
Let let me ask you a question. Could the Heritage Commission develop one or two standards that could be included with this zoning overlay district?
Uh, yes, we actually defined some that we could address.
For example.
Like lighting, signage. Signage for historic buildings is encouraged not to be plastic, orange, or flashing, or you know, or or internally lighted.
I I would accept any or all of those, just so that we have something that is a standard that we can say.
This is why.
This is why we have this district. Or this overlay.
I I think we can do that. Unfortunately, our tender lines tonight.
No, it's not.
Oh.
Because we have our our required public hearing. The last date is January, what?
Four weeks from tonight.
Four weeks from tonight. So we will be having a meeting between Christmas and New Year's. And if you were to develop some standards, we would be certainly, you you take a look at them at that meeting.
The other traditional things that we've looked at is if a building needs to be, historic building needs to be altered to do something in in the style or manner of the building. Or to do it on the side or the back to not remove historic.
Things like a historic facade.
Yes, exactly.
Don't remove it as a part of renovation.
Stone steps, that kind of thing.
And that could be one of your standards, that these buildings have no removal. Pieces of historic significance.
That's what White River Junction did. Even in their more modern area, they they actually said, oh, no, that colored glass up there, that's iconic. And so we're, you know, we have to keep that.
You can't get rid of those, the historic pieces, that that stained glass window. You can't remove that stained glass window as a part of a renovation because that's why you made it a historic building was the stained glass window. Or you've got some architectural features like a carved front door. Or some columns or whatever.
A granite tunnel.
A what? A granite tunnel. A granite tunnel.
I think one of my like questions, I live in a an old house, so I certainly respect the the efforts. I think one of my concerns, looking at what we're facing in town right now with renovating Whitney Hall, is we have things that were gifted to the town and rules that were set up like Hughes Park. And we go to see what we can do to improve the future of our town and make good decisions. And we're bound in by like this piece here goes to this, and this goes to this, and this has this rule. So I just want to think a little bit too about like, why are we doing it? What's the goal? Who are we involving? And maybe the answer is, we would rather have a bigger historic district. Maybe it's that, you know, some of these fit. But I guess I'd like to see it fleshed out and also just discuss in terms of how does this impact our future overall? You know, it's always very nice to talk about saving things. Like I'm saving a farmhouse that deserves to get a bulldozer. Definitely deserves to get a bulldozer, but I'm doing it because I love it and that's my thing. Is it fair to bind future taxpayers?
So let's take a question from Tim and then Seeley, I think you had a comment, and then Madeline. All right, Tim, go ahead.
Not so much a question, I guess, it's a feeling on this. Here's discussion. Is that at this stage of the cycle of proposing zoning amendments, I think we're too late to take this in any consider considerably more detailed fashion, even if we do have one more meeting. I would suggest that we incorporate these ideas in zoning rewrite next year. And that we we take the time to do this, to do this right.
It doesn't need any.
Well, I think it does, and I I think there's been valid points made here that it does need some more information because this is also an item that will appear on the warrant, it would require explanation and what have you, and you're going to have a vote of the board recorded about if they approve it or not. It's not going to be unanimous. And so it's, I I just don't think it's the right time to advance the site.
We started in 2009. So we're not feeling like it's not the right time.
Well, I understand, but if we'd have been able to discuss this June and had time to really think about it and flesh it out, that's the would have been the better approach to this.
And I think you put forward to the select board, you did not appear at the select board meeting that you were on the agenda for, for whatever reason, but you had put forward the letters to the select board, but I don't think this group necessarily got a copy, did they? Like you referenced them tonight, but we, the select board got to see those letters. So those backup documents and some of the things that you've done, which you guys are familiar with, you've seen a bunch of times these. I don't think everyone here has had the benefit. Same thing with certified local government. I know it's been a long process because you guys have come before us before, but I'm not sure everybody's been privy to how detailed the process was. So maybe giving people a little bit more of that rather, you know, I understand you guys have worked very hard, and I I don't want it to be that. I think just sometimes having access to the background because you weren't in the meeting. And, you know, the select board obviously has seen some of this stuff.
Right. This is going to be presented as a planning board proposal, warrant article, because it's not a petition. So it's going to be powered name on the warrants presented by the planning board.
And I I feel like I can be persuaded this is a good idea. Just what I've heard so far is just not brought me to that thought.
Yeah, I I think it's an excellent idea. I think, you know, as a vehicle for grant money, yeah, I'm in favor of it. As a zoning vehicle in its current form, without any sort of standards whatsoever, I have to agree with Kurt, what's the, you know, what's the reason from a zoning perspective? From the zoning board perspective? From your perspective, I understand where you're coming from. From our perspective, it it gets us back, as I said before, to alternative village plan, which had, you know, a lot of potentially good ideas, but no, no standards by which this board or the Heritage Commission or whoever gets to decide what can and cannot be done. A- as you're presenting it, anybody could do anything. And I know you've talked to the three building owners and, you know, considering that none of them are privately owned, you know, you've probably got a pretty good chance that nothing drastic is going to happen, but I I just have a real problem that this is going to be the top of a slippery slope. Seeley, you had a comment?
Let me, let me just back up a little bit. And she says, we've been working on this thing a long time. We have, this is in the master plan and has been brought up. And we have, we know that the town is headed towards economic development. And one of our greatest assets are historic buildings. This is not making any cost to the town. It would cost the town if we didn't have it because we got to take care of these buildings and we have. Okay, the other thing that that's that that you don't aren't aware of is that we have a scenic byway. And the hope is that we'll bring more people in to see, and that's one of the reasons to have a historic overlay. We can advertise it and people can come into town and it, you know, visit our town and so on, so so forth. And that's what they mean in the master plan, too. It's not going to cost the town any anything. The other thing that that you keep talking about have standards, we don't want any standards because people are afraid of that. And they won't, they they're afraid of that. They don't want to be told what kind of shutters you got or what color you want. They're historic buildings and we need money to take care of them. And the only way we we can do it is to have it listed as a historic district. That's the only way we can do it. We can't buy the, we can't advance Enfield Center that the town hall because we've got to get the land, we got to get a septic system, we got to put a bathroom in. And that building can be used for a lot of things and possibly bring more money into the town. I mean, it's got so many useful things we could use it for. And the the museum, you know, that, I don't know how many you've been to that that museum, but I had never gone to it a couple of years ago, and I was astounded by it.
Schoolhouse Museum?
Yes, I did, yes. And it was, it was great. It was just wonderful.
Does it open?
Um, and the church has been there, it's in use. And I just think if we keep holding it up and pushing it back, it will never happen. We'll never get this thing done. It's not going to do anything to to the zoning or anything. It won't. For now, get it a historic district. And down the road, if you want to put in something to make it more clear or more legitimate, how are you going to do it? But I really think.
But why can't you do that now?
Because what are we going to say?
I don't know. You know, Seeley. Papalist is a papalist tiger because it's just a title on a piece of paper.
Yes.
Yes.
You have to get grants. That's the whole purpose.
That's the whole purpose.
That's the whole purpose.
Yeah, but they're going to, any grant is going to say, well, what what are the restrictions?
No.
No, they're not.
They're going to say that, but they say they're not.
The restriction is the zoning right.
Yes.
All right, Madeline.
Seems that to have said, you know, that the grants are going to ask for our restriction. I just would like to understand what sort of experience you're referring to because you said it so forcefully as if this is something we run into.
No, I just, to me, it's sort of like common sense. If I was going to donate X amount of dollars to a project for historical purpose, I would like to know what the what it's going towards and it's going to be used properly and that it's not going to be changed in two years down the road.
Okay, so that would be the, so you're thinking about the grant process with the state. So that seems.
No, with any, with any grant funder.
But wouldn't they then decide on the merits of the of the project, it seems to me?
Right.
Um, so I have another question. I'm a little bit confused, I I just an operative question. One, if for Kate, what would you say? How can I say? It's the opposite of what you're saying. You're saying that this would, you know, impose these these burdens. Why?
No, I'm not saying a burden. So every grants, I, so I have extensive.
Back to the administrative, how would this not fit into Enfield? You had just said before, this is going to be in not in 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 so fact, this administration, how would it not affect that? I'm just asking in a term.
How would it not affect it?
Yes, how would it?
I can't answer that because there's no way it wouldn't affect it. Anytime you ask for additional staff time, you're taking away from something else they're doing. So it has to.
Ask for additional staff time.
Okay, so I'm, this is down in the soup and nuts of how companies run and towns run. So we have an obligation to taxpayers. We have a fiduciary responsibility to do all of our accounting. So when a donation is made, it comes in, it's logged in, right? So these are all activities that the more, like, say you generate a thousand five dollars.
If they were to get a grant, there would be backend work from the town.
And there's no way there isn't. So people always say free. Excuse me, can I finish? So.
Just trying to understand.
Yeah, I, you won't understand if I'm not able to finish my sentence. So if you are doing all of this work, right, which is great, right? You get all this grant money. Sometimes what you find is you get, you're like, I got a thousand dollars and you end up with a thousand dollars in staff labor. So there are different levels of grants. Some are more desirable than others. That's something you would work very closely with the town office because there is a cost to doing that work, right? It's not like we have a free person sitting. We don't have all of these people doing nothing in the town office. So it's the same reason why we talk about when we're going to bond something. Do we go to Mascoma Bank? Do we go to the bond bank? Or do we go to USDA, who has a very high level of scrutiny, right? So federal grants tend to, so you need strategy, you need goals, you need tracking. They are ones that have, you have to provide the receipts. You might just need to have a ledger. So there's all of those pieces that people don't think about. They're like, yeah, I got free money, right? And that feels good, but Lakeside Park had a a a high cost to, you know, we have all of these people going to meetings and doing this. Those people all have to be paid. Every time we send them to another meeting, ask them to produce another report and do another filing. That is an operations cost. And so we have to decide as a town, what are we going to spend our time on, right?
So point of clarification, so they're asking to put an overlay and and what we've heard tonight is that that's necessary. That that overlay, that that name, the overlay is necessary in order for them to apply for grants. Is that true or not?
Well, so they said might, and they don't have examples. One of the things I'm suggesting is that they get examples because I think a good example would be, no, we need to be looking at this from a business standpoint. We shouldn't O G's people. It's very serious. We're spending taxpayer dollars to pay these people in town, right? And I, we have fiduciary responsibility. So I'm looking at it from a business standpoint. We get this, right? So say there's a grant for a hundred thousand dollars and the reporting is easy. That's a great decision, right? That's not always that way. So get like some examples of ones you can, you actually require this. So if you have an actual requirement, show us an example.
No, I.
Lee, yes, I want to, I want to stop here for a second. Kate, you're very smart and doing all this the way you think and, but it's so different within this, with this, in this town and goals. You can't always do that. But I want to ask you, because you're talking about grants. Tell me about the sign we just bought for twenty seven thousand dollars that's sitting there blinking in front of the community building. Is that, if you count that? Is that, if you count that?
I, the, so, uh, yes, and I think that needs to be remanded back to discuss with us.
So, what I, I hate, just to try and understand, so what you're saying. What I, what I'm trying to understand is the connection between how. The fact that we were able to call this an overlay. Would affect that very process which you're describing, which is the grant process, which. The grant process would be the same no matter what. You know, the, the people, the administration of the grant. So. We wanna continue to apply for grants, so we, which we are already doing and already using those resources. So what I'm not quite trying to understand is how you're saying. That then being able to say we have this overlay would exacerbate or change those difficult.
No, it's not what I'm saying, my, my question was, what are the goals, right? Like, what is the plan? What are the goals? And so, cuz you, if you need the overlay to do it and you have a plan laid out and goals. Then, you know, there will be impacts that can be evaluated, and that's something the town manager's office can help with. I also, um, if you've been to recent select board meetings. And somebody's coming with a grant or a project, you'll see that things are getting a little more scrutiny, cuz we're asking the question, what is the total cost, right?
That's why I'm trying to see is, how would the fact that this is called an overlay would change? That, and my other question is. My understanding is, whereas there might be grants that make it, where it's better for us to be able to say we have this historic district. Are there grants that we are going to be excluded from if we call it a historic district? To me, it seems like it opens up the field to more possibilities, even if we're not completely aware of what those possibilities are. Rather than the other way around. So as I say, I just, I, I have a lot of trouble seeing how. That name affects a process that you've described, it's very real, but it's connected to any kind of grant. That, that we might get. The other question, I have another, moving on to another thing, so. The question of standards and a slippery slope for other zoning districts. It seems to me, the slippery slope for any other districts. Is to be confronted when those are presented to you, not, not, not now. I mean, we're, we're asking for this now, is it a slippery slope? I don't know, it's a slippery slope when the next one comes along and then you can make that decision. But is it possible? That, my understanding is, if this is this zoning question. If we then, as an overlay. Can then decide later on the standards, we can come back and make those standards, do we have to have those now? Can't we say it's an overlay? And maybe since there's zoning regulations which will require your, you know, your approval, can't they be made? Next year, three years from now, or, or, or as things change, or is perhaps. Other people in, you know, in Enfield Center decide that they want to join. It seems to me that those are questions that can still be addressed and they would come to you anyway.
I, I would say that, you know. It, those are questions that can be addressed in the future. But to have nothing going into, going into it. Um. I, I still stand by. By feeling. That. It's. It's a paper tiger. Um. Lee, did you have a comment?
I just had a comment, um, Lee Davis. In the museum, and I keep thinking of this one object. Gentleman who invented the first steam iron came from Enfield Center. And that iron is in the museum. And I keep thinking of that beautiful museum, the beautiful church. And I love the town center. Building. Um, when Seeley put on a play there. Uh, a few old home days ago. People were clamoring to have a theater school for children in the summer. You know, there were a lot of things opened up with just that one in. And I just hate to see. Anything that can be improved or kept. Such as sacred buildings with such history to be decided only on a money basis. So they're asking for an overlay, they're not asking for money, they're saying possibly maybe a grant in the future. So, um, um, you know, that's just one citizen of Enfield opinion, and I'm wondering how many others would share that.
The only way you're gonna find out is to. Put it on the ballot. And. I, I guess, at this point, at twenty. Twenty-two minutes and twenty-three minutes before nine. Uh. I, I don't think that we're going to. Reach a consensus. Right here and now. And I, I see three courses of action that the board can take tonight. One is to approve the overlay. The proposal for. A, an overlay district as written with no standards. The other is to deny it. And the middle ground, which is where I stand personally. Is to have the Heritage Commission come back in two weeks. With some standards that can be incorporated into it. And maybe, you know. I, that would certainly satisfy me. Um, let's go around the tables and see how board members feel. Tim, oh, let's start with Kurt.
We're voting, do I get to, I won't be voting, so.
You won't be voting, but this.
There's no motion on the table.
This is just a.
Yeah, okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify, this is still discussion, yeah.
This is discussion, it's, it's a straw poll of the three options.
I don't think it's ready for the planning board to present as their warrant article.
Tim?
I remain un, unpersuaded that, that this, this action is necessary. I think it would be better served to. The goals that are if this came up. Next year after the. Historic district sections of the master plan. Recreation sections of the master plan. And. Fleshed out. We have a better understanding of. Properties in the town. I don't see that an argument's been made, it's very valid yet, but. It shows that without this overlay, a certain grant cannot be had. But again, as I said before, I do recommend, open to be persuaded that this is a good idea, but it's, it's not there.
Brett?
Uh, two conflicting thoughts, sorry. First one is, uh, it's first I've seen it, first time it's been presented to me. I think it's sort of a bit of a rush for us to make a decision with the planning board with this on the ballot. On the other hand. I don't think they're asking for much. I, I don't see a downside other than Kate's point about administrative costs. But they're asking for an overlay with the same standards. I, I don't see a problem. Personally, but I'm new to planning, so, there you go.
Phil?
Uh, I don't see any downside to it. I say. If it gives them a greater, so getting a grant to keep those buildings in shape, I'm for it.
To reiterate, reiterate, I'd like to see them come back in two weeks with some standards that we can take a look at. And at that point, I would probably be inclined to be in favor of it.
I personally am inclined to be in favor of it, cuz I don't see a downside. Um, yeah, there's going to, if there, if there's going to be extra town expenses. It's gonna be whether or not there's no overlay or not. Because that's gonna be up to the town to decide whether or not, it's not up to the Heritage Commission to put in for grants. It's actually up to the town to put into grants, so they're gonna have to make the decision at that point. And as for the third thing, we really can't deny it tonight, because you can't vote on anything until. After, after the public hearing.
Right.
So, you know, this is just a straw poll at this point, but I, you know. What I like to see standards, yeah, but it's, but it doesn't, doesn't make a real difference, I don't think so.
Well, I think you have to vote if it's gonna be a planning board warrant article or not.
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing, not tonight.
You don't even have to have a public hearing.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
For any, any, yeah, you have to have public hearings for all, any of these.
No, 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 it's only a public hearing on this article if you vote tonight to accept it.
We don't have to vote tonight to accept it.
Yeah, it says the deadline.
Well, you may be.
It's the deadline for the article.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
February first is the dead, is the deadline for putting it on the warrant.
Yeah, okay.
It's confusing the two.
But if we choose not to advance it to. Uh, a planning board article that we wanna have a hearing about, then we could do that tonight.
No, we would. No, because they can still bring it up at the public hearing.
We can have a, we, the, the place for us to decide yes or no. Is at the public hearing, they can bring it up at a public hearing.
Why is this any different than any of the other zoning amendments that we've proposed?
Because it's being proposed by, not by the planning board.
Okay, right, that makes sense, thank you.
Kate, you wanna weigh in with your thought?
Yeah, I think if, um, if I could, if I, you know, I like to see. Things fleshed out, and so if I saw that there were grants, not a might, but there were like. Examples and we needed it, I would probably support it. So I, I wanna see a demonstrated need, not a wish and not a might. Um, and I would not support additional rules.
You would not support additional standards?
I would not, nope.
Okay. Linda, I think I know where you stand.
Yes, I. I, I support it and I, um. I guess the benefit of dealing with this for a long time is that I feel confident that. We do not need stronger standards. And that they would not. They would make people nervous, as you said. Um. And this is our compromise to. Start moving ahead with some of these larger projects.
For my own education. When you have a building that's declared a historical building, doesn't this historical society maintain certain standards that the building has to be maintained by?
No, 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 only if they own the building.
Right.
So the schoolhouse in Enfield Center, the two-story schoolhouse. Enfield Museum, it has several names, um.
Who owns those, are they all privately?
No, uh, the, oh, you didn't get one of these.
Doesn't matter, I mean.
Um, the trustees of the Union Church own that. The, the museum, the historical society does own it, they bought it from the town. And the town of Enfield owns the Enfield Center townhouse.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we need to reach a decision and, uh, I'm not, I see. No consensus amongst board members tonight. Uh.
However, there is a majority, yes.
Well, I mean, if someone wants to make a motion.
Somebody wanna make a motion that we.
I make a motion, bring it forward to the public hearing.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
No.
Abstentions, everybody's voted.
So get a count for, for Whitney, one.
Okay, raise your hands if you're in favor of bringing it to the public hearing.
One, two, three, four, five. Opposed?
Opposed is two.
Two, okay.
All right. There we have it.
And so. What happens next?
So what happens next is we will have our public hearing. Uh, either on the twenty-eighth of this month or the fourth of January. Most likely the fourth of January.
Four weeks from tonight.
Four weeks from tonight. Uh.
Which is, which is four. What, and the Tuesday?
No, so the, five, thirteen?
Thirteen. Eleventh.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Wednesday, eleven.
This, uh. This needs to be formatted as a zoning change. In what sections are gonna go in, whether they're actually gonna be worded in the zoning ordinance, correct?
It would go down as a new zoning district slash overlay.
It's a whole new paragraph under, on a stand, a standalone paragraph, right?
Yeah, just like we added the, uh, Shed Street locks.
Right.
Where it has its own number and its own paragraph.
Five and all the others below that.
Okeydoke, um. We have a plan of action on this.
Great, thank you.
All right, next is parking.
I would suggest that we already. Dispersed with this topic in our last meeting. That our final decision on that was that, uh. Concluded to table this topic for future revaluation of zoning.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think one of the comments that Ed had made to us. To reiterate was that there are many places that are going to know parking space rules because of how life's changing. So I think he had talked to you maybe a little bit about doing some national research. And, and addressing it in a future time.
I came to that same conclusion.
Okay.
It's tables, yeah.
So, and I think, you know.
Just forget it's, it's tabled.
Yay, let me just go.
That means no more talk.
Okay, next, ADUs. Rob, can you pull up the graph language of ADUs?
Yes. Seeley, that's something today.
I would care if you just, you can move to these.
I will.
Actually, do you wanna do a brief recess or just stand up?
That'd be nice, reset three minutes?
Three-minute recess.
Three-minute recess.
Three-minute recess, okay.
All guys, thank you, you need to move.
Yeah. Oh, no, I assume. No, Seeley, the answer to your question is, uh, fully grant funded and there are basically no recording requirements. So it's, they're basically, there's no extensive recording. So there's, that sign was heavily paid for, it was a really, it's like. Yeah, and it's a federal one, the federal government has a lot of safety money there. So I think.
We're starting with. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're here. It's here.
And like you just looked at USDA, well, that hasn't.
Right, I just wanna ask.
Every time. Like, you're like, oh, it's not.
My great conversation.
It's not hurting, it's not changing. I, I. It's just, you know, it's. And it's almost, I wanted to.
Less the shout to spend the money. Right, personally.
Cause there's a lot of grants, you know, no, I.
A bulldozer.
No, that's, I know.
That's just my opinion.
And, and all I had to do was. These are all, this is what we did. It's not yet. I know. Well, and you know, I, the original, um, the, all of the laptops, they're not the same ones, but the original installation.
Never been held there. It's six on the, plenty of lines.
I got that.
There's no parking, there's no, there's no parking. It's a whole place, it's the other six.
So I've been doing it for a while, but I'm not a development officer, so when I see a lot of.
Yeah, you, you get it.
What people eat. I would like to say. Right, to be asked, would you like, how do you feel?
It's hard to have a dance over the.
If we can, it's your local, your own state.
And TV was that.
Yes, and I kinda got water, I want.
There comes a time when you have to do it, of course. It's sad, but it's just another building, I said. And it can't chew eight.
There was jokes, right, I believe it's Michael, there was jokes that, like, Jimmy and I were friends a lot, there's not much, but.
Oh, really?
Actually, my other mom. Like, and I'm like, Jimmy's like, oh, we actually are cousins, but, and you know, I think.
My brother-in-law.
My brother-in-law lost, uh, lost all his, uh, forces. From some disease or something. She used her name, her state town, uh, oh, wow, there.
I didn't say I could do that, I can't do it.
Interesting, some, uh, toxin. All is in.
Yes, exactly.
That's, yeah, that's the point that I was trying to make. End this discussion, suffer whether or not it's on the round. Yeah.
All right, people wanna settle in? Thirty-second warning.
And the email, it was, why does it have?
Okay, so, Kip's not here.
There's Rob. You got the wording?
That's the one I asked for.
Yeah. I was sitting at that one when I was in Virginia, said, the entire board is that big on the screen. Okay? And every time somebody spoke, it's half the screen. And the, the board is like this.
That's ridiculous.
On the.
On Microsoft Teams.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I said, when I was in Virginia, Microsoft Teams, the entire board was that big on my screen. And anytime anybody talked, I get in half the people. And anybody who was out in the waiting room were actually bigger than the bo- the board was. You may have to try another product.
Oh, wow.
Like Zoom?
Not going back to Zoom. Not with the experience we've had, I guarantee we're not going back.
Doesn't Cisco have something?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, during recess, I had a request by a member of the Conservation Commission. If we can bring that up next because there are some sick animals at home that need tending. Board, have any objections to doing cut the Conservation Commission?
Nope, nope.
Yeah, I guess, my, my request would just be that, given that, that they keep it relatively brief and not as long as this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, um, who's gonna speak for the Conservation Commission? Jerry or?
No, Mr. Davis has, uh, asked to talk, so.
Okay, ladies, come on up.
The one I want to talk about is a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer for the prime wetlands only. You all understand, I know, how important wetlands are, the purpose they serve, clean waters, habitat, shoreline stabilization, recreation, you know. And, um, so, keep it short, we have a fifty-foot buffer from the designated shoreline, fifty feet, no building. We're asking, and I don't think it's unreasonable because of what's going on today, we want an extra hundred-foot buffer. It's been proven that a hundred, uh, just a hundred feet only clean seventy percent of any pollutants that go into the soil, washed down from roadways. So I think it's important because of activities that are going on in the area that the wetlands, prime wetlands, be so protected. We've been in contact with a lot of towns and they usually have a hundred, hundred-and-fifty. McDaniel's Marsh, am I correct, is six-hundred-and-fifty feet?
That's what you said.
Yes, six-hundred-and-fifty feet, cause that is pristine wetlands. So, one thing I, I wanted to throw out for thought, today on the news, the federal government is sending up a satellite, it's called SWOT, S-W-O-T. Can't remember all that it stands for, but it has to do with, the only purpose is that to monitor the quality of the water, the quantity of the water, of the whole world, and monitor what's going on. And this is any body of water. Wetlands is a topographical program, because as you know, there's a, there's a problem with water. Even in Enfield, we've had problems. Talking about going to Mars to possibly investigate a water source. And right in our own backyard, we have these prime wetlands that are so beautiful. They use for education, recreation, I think they should be protected. So that's what we're asking for your support to keep our wetlands, prime wetlands pristine and protected and an extra hundred feet. How long is this room?
I don't know, twenty-four maybe?
Okay.
Thirty.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, too close enough.
It's, uh, five of these probably.
Yes, that's all we're asking, to protect our wetlands.
Fine.
Prime wetlands, yeah, cause I got in trouble by just saying.
How many prime wetlands do we have? This, this might fall under.
Five.
Five, and, and what are those, just a, as examples?
Well, there's, um, Jaws Pond.
Excuse me, they are delineated in our natural resources inventory on the map five. I have some in my truck, if you don't help. The actual lot numbers and geographical.
Just tell us the, the common, the common names.
Yeah, Jock, uh, Mud, Mud Pond.
Mud Pond, Bog, Bog, Tsukis is not.
No, no.
The round, the well, the pro- the Proctor Wells.
Spectacle Pond is not.
Spectacle Pond is, is one, is one of the areas that the prime wetland is close to, and also the Beckdale Brook.
The Beckdale Brook.
I was gonna say it's close to it, but it's not.
Right, right.
Cause I'm not.
There's probably no.
Yeah, you know this.
Probably no one knows the, uh, linear, not linear, but the perimeter distance around.
I did not know that.
They, they were all delineated, were declared them as prime wetland. They are in the DES's files, if you wanna get those.
And voter.
The largest one, I think, is seventy acres. I think the largest one is about seventy or seventy-two acres.
Long road is eight miles.
Okay, but, yeah, I mean, you brought up at the select board meeting about the wellhead. Just, just as a comment, wellhead protection is already seven-hundred-and-fifty feet.
So, those apply to the wells that are used by the municipal service.
Exactly.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, but, yeah, I mean, how many properties are we actually talking about that this could affect? I mean, I don't, I don't see much development on Mud Pond.
Most of the property along Mud Pond, uh, where the water, prime wetland is, is owned by the town already.
Right.
Well, is the perimeter though?
Right.
I, I think the part, the problem is this, why we have to come and ask for your support. It used to be, um, designated by the state. Years ago, the state canceled that with a, with a minimum, maximum of fifty feet and gave it over to the town municipality to set it up to protect their wetlands. We never got that message, it got lost in the shuffle. So when we were in, um, a discussion with somebody who wanted to build on the prime land and we said we have a hundred-and-fifty, and then we looked, it was fifty feet. So these people were gonna build fifty-one feet.
Yeah.
And, um, so, that's my, that's my presentation. I don't think I have to say anymore.
Okay, uh, first, Mike, same as the other question, is this a petition or is this a planning board?
They're bringing it to the planning board.
Let me dig, let me.
Well, it's gonna go in the warrant as a petition warrant article or?
Just, just a moment, let me declare by some, we're asking the planning board for a, a support. We're not asking them to put this up as a warrant article on their own.
Okay, okay, all right.
Conservation Commission is doing this, what we wanna do is give the planning.
Do you have the signatures?
Not us.
No, no, does the Conservation Commission have the signatures for a petition warrant?
You don't need a petition, the only reason we need a petition is if we're denied your support.
Which would have to be next year.
So.
It's a, it's a.
Tonight's the deadline.
I'm already aware of the fact that our missions, to put this on as the Conservation Commission, have to be in by a date of February.
Okay.
No, no.
I've cleared that, I have cleared that with Alisa Lanette.
Rob, zoning.
Zoning, the zoning deadline is today.
Today.
They're not teaching, we're talking about a petition.
Petition.
Yeah, they can put a petition, why not?
That's right. The, the legislative body of the voters of this town, they have authority to change things if they want to. By, yeah, the democracy.
This is only change, sounds like to me.
So if you don't want it to be a zoning change, then the date is not a problem.
Right.
You're, if you're not asking for a zoning change, we're not worried about the date, that's.
Well, that would be a challenge.
Well, if it is a zoning change, then the date is today.
Yeah, right, yeah. And, and then, in fact, but that was my first part, it sounds like that's still unknown, but that's fine. Um, this, there is still, Enfield still has a hundred-foot buffer for prime wetlands.
No, we do not.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, we do not.
Let me, can, let me read the RSA to you?
Sure, go ahead.
RSA four A two dash A colon fifteen, local option, prime wetlands. Um, uh, second sentence, uh, section B, second sentence. The acceptance of any prime wetland designated by the department prior to the effective date of this paragraph shall remain in effect, effective date twenty-twenty-twelve. And then in section four A two dash A colon eleven, um, number four, paragraph A. And it goes on to say, the department shall not grant a permit with respect to any project to be undertaken in any area mapped, designated, or filed as a prime wetland pursuant to RSA four A two dash A fifteen or within one hundred feet of any prime wetland where a hundred-foot buffer was required at the time of designation unless the department first notifies the local governing body, planning board, and goes on. So there is a hundred-foot buffer there. They can apply for a waiver to the DES to build within that hundred-foot buffer, but only if it meets certain, very strict criteria that will not affect, and it goes on what's, uh, what the DES will look at to grant a waiver.
That's not true.
It's the RSA.
That, that particular, uh, regulation was delegated to the local authorities by the state legislature. They don't want to control.
This is, this is off the state website, RSA's, last week.
The state website don't bring up the date.
No.
I have talked to the people at the DES, I have talked to the people at the legislature, and that's what they've said. They delegated the responsibility for setbacks to wetlands to the communities. And the community here only had a fifty-one-foot setback. That was what Ron told me as well.
For what?
That's what prompted us with this particular warrant article.
Prime wetlands are wetlands, right?
There are, there are special designations.
Yeah, wouldn't it be a subset of wetlands?
Well, a prime wetland is a wetland, yes, but not all wetlands are prime wetlands, right?
They're only asked. That is a.
It's a, it's a subset.
Designated, because we got more, but we didn't have the.
Structures that are within fifty feet, and I'm sure there are a few, but are they grandfathered? They're allowed to stay?
Unfortunately, that's case.
When, when we're.
We tear it down here.
When were all of our prime wetlands established?
Nineteen eighty-seven.
So way before that twenty-twelve date, that, that current.
So in any case, they're still gonna have to put it if they want a hundred-and-fifty.
Right, if you want a hundred-and-fifty.
But you, but they've got a hundred, right?
They still, they do have a hundred.
We have a.
They either have fifty or a hundred, that's up for discussion.
Well, that's, that's not true, then, why, why was the state or why was the county willing, planning board willing to give permission for that guy to go east out and dig the wetlands, he was a prime wetland.
Because didn't go to the planning board and went to the zoning board. Never went anyplace. Right, it didn't go to planning board at all. It would've gone to zoning anyways, they applied for a special exception, never had to hear it, it's ever happened.
Okay, so I am hoping to get some help from you guys, so, on setback. A hundred-and-fifty-foot setback means that's like your base starting line and then you apply for the exception if you.
Go inside.
So if we were to do this, anything that was, say, within fifty feet now doesn't meet the current requirement, but stays. Obviously, if you wanna put a new dormer on it, does that turn it, do, are we perpetuating?
That, that, that's not changing.
Okay, it's not changing.
It's not changing the setback, if you wanted to add a garage or a garage.
Port to make it more accessible.
Within that setback area, or even the deck.
Expand the footprints.
Right.
Or a handicap.
But it's three-dimensional, right, Rob?
Those are all.
It's three-dimensional, you can't go higher.
For grandfather.
Right.
What you're talking about.
Right.
No, that, I, that's, I, cause I don't know enough about the process, thank you.
Um, I'm not sure about handicap.
Handicap would.
Well, so if there's handicap, you have to have, any handicap you want, right? There's a difference between the two of them.
Well, then apply the variance.
The shoreline protecting buffer. The shoreline protecting buffer, the woodland buffer goes back a hundred feet. Well, it's a hundred-and-fifty feet including the shoreline buffer. So basically, all we're really asking for is the same kind of protection from prime wetlands that you already have for, uh, shoreline protection.
Different criteria for.
So here's a question, so how many lots are affected and how many acres are affected?
All of the water that drains from prime wetlands would be protected, and that's the, that's one of the major factors in, in asking for this kind of setback. Property is not important if you don't have water for people to drink.
So we have a lot, I'm asking for an actual number, do you have any actual num? Like, I, for me to picture it, like, I get the whole concept of all, right, and I've looked extensively at the maps. Um, but do we know, like, are there a hundred lots that are affected? Is there another, like, nine-hundred acre, that kind of idea?
When the study was done, they had all that information, every property owner was written to and they had the, you know, we were studying, going out, um, we had, you know, professionals doing this and, asked for permission, the whole nine yards, so when this was done, acreage was, was, uh, it was all covered and everybody knew about it, so I don't know if that information's still available.
Well, from our maps, I can give you the number of property value, a number of pieces of property that are included in the prime wetland. Many of them, as I say, are already owned by the town. But nevertheless, if that's what you want, but my point is that we're not asking the, what I'm, what I really wanna be sure is that a warrant article for a zoning change like this, put up by the Conservation Commission, if passed by the voters, is gonna be enforceable.
Well, of course it would be.
All right, that's.
If, if, if the voters pass the article, it would be enforceable.
Good, that's all I wanted to know, because ultimately, ultimately, this community depends on what the public here wants. If they wanna fill it up with houses, run out their water supply, pollute their water like it happened before, have to dig new wells when they're just putting this, another straw in the same, in the same bottle, then that's their funeral. As long as they understand it, we plan to have a wetland scientist come here and we're gonna have an educational meeting in February that the town is invited to. We're gonna put the comments that this guy makes on our website, on the town newsletter, and maybe even on listserv if they take that out. So we're making an effort to notify all the citizens that this is something that is important for their welfare. If they don't wanna vote for it on that basis, then it's their funeral.
Okay, but it, it would be helpful to the Conservation Commission if your proposed change in the setback, or the increase in the setback, had the support of this body.
That's why.
Absol- absolutely. And I, I just can't imagine thinking of loss of money on building. And I, I just can't imagine thinking of loss of money on billable land in comparison to pristine water and the beauty that these wetlands give us. And besides, it's so buggy, who's gonna wanna live in it, unless, you know? So, I'm, 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 right, you know what it's like, you know, unless you're a true Yankee, you know?
No, that's what those fancy hats are for.
Yeah, so, but that's why we're here, you know?
So, do, do we at this point feel that we have enough information to lend our support?
I have two questions.
The question of the public here.
I, I, I know, I know.
To send it or not.
But I'd, I'd, I'd like to send them away tonight with some sense of, of whether they have our support, or whether they're gonna need to do it by petition, whether the date is today or sometime in February.
We would really appreciate that.
So my two questions and points, so, I, I, I always worry when we have something come up that's a change that affects two kind of contentious, potentially contentious issues that have been recently addressed, right? It's just, we try to avoid that, so, there was the Tabor property in which the Conservation Commission had to redo their hearing because there was a conflict of interest, um, that, so it wasn't done properly, had to be redone. So this would affect the Tabor property, so there's a chance that he'll come back, um, and say that this was done as retaliation, right? And I think the other one is that there, we just did a minor subdivision along Mud Pond, knowing that the future is probably a major subdivision, so are we gonna get called on the carpet for changing the? Now, it's not a conceptual right now, but I'm just saying, there's gonna be that question, so I wanted to raise that to you guys so that we, we have an answer and we've thought about it at least.
Isn't it if someone had applied and is in the process, like Tabor, would he be still in the fifty-one-foot buffer?
I suspect he would still.
I think that would be.
I have, um, Zeta Diesel is the woman at DES that's in charge of his application.
And you're not supposed to be commenting on it because you're supposed to be recusing yourself.
No, ma'am, I'm not recusing myself at all, and I, I'm.
Okay, but you're on record, so I just, I don't wanna get into legal trouble.
Is, 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 is communicating with the Conservation Commission. I'm privy, privy to that contribu, to that communication, because I'm on the Conservation Commission. And all I'm saying is, that they have already told me that he could build his house there at fifty-one feet from that prime wetland. What they are concerned about is his three thousand, three hundred-foot driveway that he wants to build across six wetlands along the, uh, along George Hill, along George Hill Road. That's what they're, that's what they're concerned about at the moment.
So he, so, yeah, so he, he would be safe, the town would not be.
And I wanna clarify, Shirley is supposed to be handling that, and we are not supposed to be hearing through you on that topic. Then I will talk to the town manager again.
Jerry, one other quick question, if I may, um, to, when you, if this gets increased to a hundred and fifty-foot, uh, setback, delineation, who is going to be, where is the funds going to be coming from to pay for that mapping?
I think that would be up to the, um, company or person who's going to be doing the building.
You have to, you have to resubmit maps, you have to submit maps to DES with your new delineation on those maps.
Well, the delineation of the wetland has already been.
No, no, the buffer, a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Um, the RSA states, um, however, any revision to the boundary shall be delineated using wetland delineation methods as adopted by the departments and by the standards of this section. So the boundary has to be delineated.
Is that a significant amount of work and surveying, right?
Well, it's expensive.
Talking. Five front, five front one?
They have five front ones, so.
That's a lot of survey. The perimeter violence that represents.
That's a lot.
Eight times a hundred and fifty feet wide, and how many acres we're talking to? I'm, I'm, I'm completely in favor of prime wetlands and protecting them and so forth. But I'm not persuaded that increasing this hundred to a hundred and fifty feet is going to have a measurable impact on protecting these wetlands in the future as opposed to the weighing up the inconvenience, the monetary costs of restricting land, land uses that to surround the prime, prime wetland by property owners, by private property. So I'm, I'm, I, I, I could be persuaded about all of this, but I, I've heard so much confusing information tonight that I'm not really willing to advance this, uh, at least not this town, town planning board, and.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Well, I just gotta ask Kurt a question, what, do you know what we have as a buffer delineated on the maps now?
That should might be, it would be the hundred foot.
Hundred foot, okay, so that we would have to redo it if we kept it at a hundred, if we put it to a hundred.
Right, well.
Because it's, yeah, the other thing I remember you saying, Dr. Teis, was there's only seven towns, towns in New Hampshire that have over a hundred feet, right?
About that, there's twenty-nine, uh, communities that have prime wetland. The point is that I'm not convinced, because what I have heard from the DES and from what I've heard from the state, that a hundred-foot wetland barrier is still enforceable. But the community here, Mr. Taylor told me that it was only fifty-one feet.
I guess what I'm saying is if we, if we've already got maps that are delineated to a hundred feet.
Let's make it clear.
Let's make it clear, well, yeah, would you, would you have a problem with changing it to a hundred feet as your warrant article?
Well, obviously, I have to take that up to the rest of the Conservation Commission, so they, we have a meeting on, on December, pardon, January third, I think it is.
Yep.
Uh, if that's in time for us to still put a warrant article in, I have no problem with waiting for that period.
If, if it's a warrant article that initiates with the planning board, you have time. If it's a warrant article that initiates with the Conservation Commission, the deadline is today.
If you want it to be a zoning change and you want it to be enforceable, it has to go with the body. That's, it's not.
Well, I was given the wrong information.
Be, because, because of the time factor. If, if you had put in a petition yesterday, we, you, you could go with that petition, if the town voted for it, it would become a valid zoning ordinance. But the, the clock has run, and you cannot put in a petition for a zoning ordinance after midnight tonight, or five o'clock tonight.
Four, five, four, whatever.
Whatever time.
Whatever posted time.
Whatever.
The petition to, uh, create a town forest.
That's not zoning.
That's not a zoning issue.
So that's okay, because we have, uh, nearly fifty signatures on that one.
Yeah, right.
That would.
Oh, that one's good.
That's my, that is my fault, I would have given the wrong information, I thought this warrant article could go in in February.
So what, so it has to, could you tell me one more time?
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna listen.
Okay, listen up.
Listen up.
I'm gonna say it once more, I hope I get it right. If it is a, okay, if it is a zoning ordinance that is put forth by the planning board.
Yes.
You have until our first public hearing on January thirteenth, or whatever it is.
Okay.
Okay? If it is a citizen's petition for a zoning article, the deadline was today to get that petition in. So, if you have a petition for a warrant article on a non-zoning issue, then you have until February, okay? But because you're asking for a zoning change, your two choices are petition by today, or it's a, a, a warrant article put forth by the planning board for which we will be holding our public hearing in four weeks.
Are you prepared to, to do that?
What's that?
Are you prepared to put up a, a, a zoning ordinance change to a hundred-foot setback from wetland?
Well, we would have to hold a public hearing.
I know, but I mean, is the board itself prepared to support that in the public hearing?
For a hundred feet or a hundred fifty?
No, a hundred feet.
A hundred?
Yeah, one hundred, one zero zero.
One zero zero. Yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think, you know.
Question.
That's what I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, though?
You may.
Okay, so, DES changed back, like, they made a recommendation to change back to fifty feet, does anyone know why?
I don't think that she. I don't think.
They just left it up to the town.
The legislature did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're gonna advocate that responsibility to the local communities, and at the time, according to Mr. Taylor, the local community here had only a fifty-one-foot setback, and that's what they've been enforcing.
Um, but, so the only reasoning was local control, there wasn't any compelling evidence that was presented? Yeah, no, and that's, I was just curious, you know, sometimes we find something and it's interesting, it would be helpful for me to understand, that's why.
And, and the fact is, if I'm understanding correctly, the current delineation maps show a hundred-foot buffer, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Look at it.
And to go to a hundred and fifty-foot buffer, a lot of expensive remapping and surveying would have to be accomplished for which at this point, there are no known funds for that, correct?
Yes.
Well, that seems to be.
Yeah. No, not in the budget. No, no.
The conservation has money.
Well, not a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, does have money, and we could do this on a partial basis, but at the present time, I'm prepared at least to say we'll accept a hundred foot, we can always come back next year or a year after that if a hundred and fifty feet is felt to be better. But if it's gonna be accomplishable this year, or twenty twenty-three with a hundred foot, I don't have any problems, all I need to do is to get.
No, we're happy, happy.
All right, Conservation Commission is five members?
Yes.
So we have three members here.
No.
Oh, you're not on anymore, okay.
Members, uh, I'm sure the others would agree, but I do have to get ahold of them.
Of course.
Yeah, Tim.
Noticed meeting.
Has to be a noticed meeting.
Yeah, Tim?
Yes, I understand that, that's why I'm saying it's January.
So January thirty.
What exact document are we, are we proposing to amend to a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet?
No, from fifty to a hundred.
You're saying.
What is part of, what am I talking? Our zoning.
What is only, but where?
I, I can't, I can't give you off the top of my head, uh, chapter and verse, maybe Kurt, do you know that?
I couldn't find it.
Can we get it drafted, I guess, as a fair question, right? But, because it has to be drafted to get it to town meeting.
Okay. Well, here's the thing, I remember, I remember the, 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 the prime wetland, designation, when that passed, that was a town meeting vote.
When was this?
Long ago.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety, ninety-seven, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, I, I, so my question is, was that, that, that probably wasn't even a zoning board ordinance?
I don't remember what.
Okay, so we don't know.
I could look it up, no, it's in the, uh.
We need to research that, yeah.
It's in the, one of the town reports.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is I'm wondering if we're, if we're just barking around this tree that doesn't exist. It might be.
Yeah.
I'm gonna research it.
We gotta.
Tim, I would posit to all of you guys, there's, in each one of the zoning, um, districts, there's a line, this is an example, this is in the R one, paragraph M, no structure shall be placed, located, or constructed within fifty feet from the seasonal high water line of any river, stream, wetland, lake, or public pond, and then it goes on to talk about docks, and that's the end of that, but, so, that sort of had to go in there, would have to be right there, would say, except for designated prime wetlands, and then, we would have to have it in the definitions.
Where does it say in any sort of town document that this is a prime wetland and you can only build within, whether it's a hundred or fifty feet to the edge of that prime wetland? Think, because, to actually, the public hearing is done at the state level. So it's actually a state zoning reg.
Which is why we've got to give that a map.
Right, right, it sort of falls to, once the town established prime wetlands, at that time, it was a default hundred-foot buffer. And then it became a statewide zoning.
And it's fallen to us for fifty foot, which is what I just read to you.
Well, no, only, only new prime, only new wetlands, prime wetland designated, only new prime wetland designations.
We need to, we need to research this, it ain't gonna happen tonight.
Okay, so, Conservation Commission, please draft up a, an ordinance that we can uh, discuss at a public hearing in January.
Have you, have you read our, our draft now?
What draft?
I don't believe we've seen it, I haven't seen it.
I gave it to Rob.
They sent it to you guys too, yeah, I thought I saw it.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, I did see it, I did see it.
I just wanna say something about this buffer thing. My experience being out in the field and doing this prime wetland stuff too, is that I found out that most of your wildlife live within that buffer, and they use, and the vegetation, so on and so forth. They eat that and they, and they use part of the wetland and, and that's what's important, and if you go start building into it, you're gonna lose it, the one, the wildlife. You know, I've seen bear in there doing the, eating stumps and things like that. And another thing is that some, some of these wetlands have this, have, uh, rare flowers, and, uh, I, there's one that Dartmouth did a big study on it, but I don't know all about it, we never got it, but that was mudplum.
Yeah.
And hopefully, the Conservation Commission will put a boardwalk in there. I do wanna say, we do have a lot of plans, this commission, the members in this commission, very active, very enthusiastic, we're trying to get together educational programs for the schools. We've ju, you know, have a speaker come in every quarterly to enlighten the public, question and answer, of, you know, get ideas, what they want, so, that's all I get to say, I've said.
Dave, can I ask you, if you have a copy of this, if you don't, I'll give you this one. If you read that through, would you tell me that the verbiage is correct for you to put it forth, or not correct?
Um.
So I can.
My goodness.
Okay.
Sent this to all you guys yesterday morning.
Right, okay.
It's the last one.
I haven't saw that, okay.
I missed it as well.
I missed, I, I missed it, but I will look at it and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Jerry?
It says, uh, it says a hundred and fifty feet in there, isn't it?
We'll just change that to a hundred, but we'll, we'll look at the language and, uh, we'll, we'll give you our recommendation as to whether the language is good zoning language.
If I can get that to January third, so I can.
Oh, you'll have, you'll have it within a week.
Great.
Okay, good.
And, and Rob would be the one doing that activity for us. Mary, if you're doing all, had the activity of ordering, right?
I mean, it's, 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 it's a board thing usually.
Well, I think Enfield kinda got on, the board does everything, what you, what's really.
Don't you have your now?
Scrambling.
I, I don't. So I just wanna make sure we're leveraging the first ever page, especially where Ken, where we're headed to a little, as his manager, I just, you know? I don't, just, I don't. But I think some of one of these, like, processing, if you have that, they're gonna identify some of the.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be that development page where we might have gotten to that.
Taking notes, I do a lot.
I'm trying.
Okay.
What's the, they'd rather.
I just wanna make sure, like, if. I wanna make sure those are coming in. I wanna make sure those are coming in. And it will shorten the beat. Thank you, because everybody's not doing good work.
What if we do those three on the twenty eighth?
Well, it's cause the prime, the prime wetlands. Dan has made the suggestion that we leave the three items for the twenty eighth.
Perfect.
Rather than, I heard enough perfect. Rather than do it today.
Wasn't gonna take long for conservation, that was forty-five minutes ago.
Well, I'd like to push back up.
Okay.
I think the R one lot density and the principal building language is so simple, the change that needs to be made to affect what. You wanted, that we should take that up and. You're being recorded.
I don't have a problem with that.
I, I am gonna set five timer. Five minutes to convince us.
Start with the R one density?
Okay, five minute timer going now.
Okay, so there is one, right there. Article four, regulation of uses, section four oh one. All we're doing is changing paragraphs K and U to read as follows. There's pretty much what we've been talking about. Skip down paragraph U, and all we're doing is taking out two words, that's it.
Yep.
That's the sum total of ten.
Yeah.
You did that in thirty seconds.
So I can sit in the audience and throw peanuts.
No, that's.
Well, I was, I was just, what was there? I, I think I agree with you, the leading, it's the. The principal building stays, stays, right? Yeah. Okay, okay, cause that opened up a whole can of words.
Can of words we didn't wanna talk about.
Yeah. Do we have to come up with a definition of a principal building? I think that's already there. Linda?
I object to the, uh, one quarter acre. I think that's. Too much too soon on top of doubling the dwelling units, doubling the, uh. Acreage required. I can just picture Main Street looking.
Like Maple Street.
Like Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
I don't think Main Street's in the R one district.
Five minutes is gonna be up here.
You have a motion on the table.
Okay.
It's on the table. May I? Linda, um, and I, I felt much the same as you. Gave this some more thought, a little research. What I'm realizing is that. In the areas where this would apply. Looking at the village area. There's a lot of non-conforming lots in there, line, line being one, which is a third of an acre lot, which would become conforming. And quarter acre. So. The density that could happen, I think, within the village. Would probably not happen overnight. It would take many years to build out. As property owners decided that, yes, indeed, I, I do wanna subdivide mine, one acre lot. Or lots, or maybe for some reason, there's only way to do it is to make three of them, whatever that may be. So. And then I, I considered, well, suppose we had a, when there is. Take a large lot adjacent to the town sewer system. That had, um, let's say seventy-five acres.
That's a good number.
Hypothetically.
Yeah, no, we don't do hypotheticals that are related to.
That's okay.
And I wanted to, um. Technically, I could, I could subdivide that into however many quarter acre lots that is, that's what, three hundred?
Yeah. Call it a hundred acres, make it easy math.
Okay.
Four hundred lots.
So four hundred lots. But there are all kinds of other provision, ordinance currently in the ordinance. That would, uh, that would hinder any sort of. Aggregation of those lots into a, a large, how small, a large compact housing development. That would represent hundreds of housing units. I'm not concerned about that happening between now and the point where we rewrite this zoning ordinance in its kind of entirety. And we think about those kind of.
That's a good point.
Issues and how will, we would want to deal with. That's a good point.
The plans are already drawn in the hypothetical.
And we said we aren't talking about the hypotheticals, which well, they already had a conceptual.
You're the one who keeps.
Well, no, I think you can't, they, they are not here to have this conversation. Once you've had it, I just don't feel it's there.
Talking about any lot that's a hundred.
Well, if you were talking about. But you guys aren't really pretending very well. That's where I'm uncomfortable.
I'm talking about Linda's spot.
I have a hundred and seventy-five acres.
Yeah, so there's motion.
And the five minutes are. Motion on the floor. Did somebody, you wanna restate the motion?
But we know that, that we.
Advance.
We propose a zoning ordinance amendment to read. As per what's displayed on the screen.
And I said, my motion was to advance this to the public hearing.
Essentially the same.
It's gotta suck.
So can I consider yours a second?
No, I had said that, I was the.
Alright, so, all in favor of the motion on the floor?
I.
Supposed.
Give us a, give us a number for Whitney, what is that? Six one?
Six one.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. That leaves, um.
Is that the other one?
That leaves ADUs.
Oh, okay.
Now, did we do the principal building language that we did? We said that one was five minutes.
Right, that was.
So that's the same.
We just did.
Okay, got it, sorry.
We're good. Could we be made to use for?
Well, here's what I recommend we do there. If, if we wanna use the draft we talked about earlier today. I think you should send that around to everyone and think about it, so that we don't have the words submitted to get back.
Right.
Could I point out one thing, though? This turned out to not be quite as simple as we initially thought. And I think the reason is, our current zoning ordinance relies on the RSA to pretty much define. What, um, the ADU is and all the stipulations that are, that, that are surrounded. It's all in that RSA. And so, when we have one definition in the tail end of the ordinance, it's accessory dwelling units, it's struck, struck out there at the top. Um, and the only change we made to that RSA, and there was probably reason for this, is to limit the size of the ADU to eight hundred square feet. Cause that size limitation doesn't exist in.
Right.
RSA. And we said no more than two bedrooms and one bathroom. And for some reason, that all of this must remain under one ownership. Those are the like, three things that we changed in the RSA, inserted in our ordinance. From your discussions over the past couple meetings. I think you're kinda disposed towards getting rid of most of these restrictions. Such as the size of the building, the number of bedrooms. And the bit about the owner ownership kinda doesn't really make sense to me in the first place, because. How are you gonna separate a property?
So condos, basically, is what they want of them.
But the RSA deals with condos, there's a whole section in there about that. So, just leave it at that.
Okay, we have homework to do on that.
I'll send this around, please.
Okay. Uh, quick master plan update, uh. I circulated a link to what will hopefully be the final draft of the master plan. And also, the PDF of that draft is on the Enfield Loop's website. I asked everybody to take a look at it and be prepared to comment at today's meeting. Uh, also circulated those two links to the select board. And we have a block of time at their next meeting on the nineteenth. To talk to them about the draft as it exists. Uh, I've received one comment already from one select board member, which was extremely positive, well done. Uh, the other two have not yet weighed in, but, um.
Won't be hitting reply on.
What's that?
It won't be hitting reply on.
Did I, did I hit reply?
You didn't do it.
Okay, whatever. So, uh, we're gonna go before the select board, talk about the work that we have done. Hopefully, we'll get, um, two more people with positive support. And we're gonna talk about our neck, our plans for next year, including getting, um. Some grant funding for the next five chapters. Getting some funding either for the budget, through the budget process, or through a grant process. Uh, to fund a professional consultant to come in and take a look at our zoning regs. And probably just. Do a rewrite from the ground up since it's been a hodgepodge for, I don't know, since what, eighty-seven or thereabouts? And, um, that's kinda where we are, um. I would like to be able to schedule the public hearing and formal adoption. Two weeks from tonight. If the board feels that we're in good enough shape to do that. Um, we can schedule it if the board thinks that there's still more work to be done. Although I don't know how it would be accomplished, because our consultant. Is basically, she turns into a pumpkin at the end of the year, because we don't have any more funds. Um.
Did we get her invoice? Cause I know Rob was, yeah.
Rob was working on it. Does she need to be there for the public hearing? I think she will be. Now, does she need to be? Cause that's, two weeks from now, you're falling ready in Christmas time. If you want public participation, it's really not the greatest, you know, part of it.
I don't think there's gonna be much. Your participation, right?
Yeah.
That's board.
I think it's us, uh. Well, I know we vote, but it's just a matter of perception, just a perception. No, you know, we, we've heard two arguments, we've heard, nobody's gonna wanna do this between Christmas and New Year's. And we've heard, people will be home between Christmas and New Years.
And have very little scheduled.
Uh, so, you know, I, I, I think from the point of view of getting this done. Um, the momentum is there, and I, I'd like to take it across the finish line in twenty twenty. I don't, I don't foresee anybody saying anything that's gonna change our minds. I don't either. So, I don't care what they say, we're not gonna, not vote for it, so.
Just, just to throw it in there. The next, I think, five chapters. The next five chapters, it has been proposed to the budget committee that it hasn't been voted on yet. That we ask to use undesigned funds for the next five chapters.
If we can get a grant, though, that would be even better.
You grant those, you're really looking for a grant to do the zoning piece.
We're looking for both.
Okay, but what I'm saying is they're gonna set it up so that. Rather than being in next year's budget, it'll be used, we'll use a part of this year's undesigned, it's cause we're gonna have an undesigned balance this year.
How much would you say?
I'm not gonna say any number at this point, because, because, no, because he got a bill from somebody today.
Yeah.
And what, a lot of engineers put their bills in December thirty-first, cause they wanna take the income next year. And not have to pay the tax on it this year. Cause they're on a cash basis.
And we, yeah, like cruel is.
Yeah, cruel is. Something that I don't like, cause.
And, uh, just a quick comment on the zoning, um, updates or rewrites. When you're doing the grant, can we just include site plan and subdivision as our package deal? Because if they do, it might be easier on the grant too, if we do a complete everything. The, the grant is as it relates to housing, which, you know. That's subdivision, site plan, that's, that's housing. Um, good comment. Yeah. Alright, um, another question for the board, and this is kind of, um. A toss-up, things could go either way. This particular grant, or actually any zoning planning board grant. Can be applied for, by the planning board or by the town. And. I, I've sent a draft of my grant proposal to Ed, haven't heard back from him yet. And I'll be bugging him. On it for feedback. Uh, hopefully get some answers pretty soon. My thought, since the master plan was really a grassroots effort by the planning board and the Master Planning Task Force. Um, is that it might be looked upon more favorably if the grant came from the planning. If that is the case, um, we need to vote on. Whether the planning board would apply for the grant as opposed to the town. And that would appear in the minutes, and that is sufficient for the New Hampshire housing. Whoever they are.
Authority.
Authority. So. Uh, are there any questions?
Is there a downside to having it come from the planning board?
Not that I am aware of, and hopefully if there is one, um, in discussion with the town manager, that information would come forth. I mean, the bottom line is still a town grant, but yeah.
I, yeah, I guess my question was some, my question was going to be, should we bring that up next Monday to the select board and have them sign off on us? Putting it for the grant.
It, it, the select board, according to the rules of this grant. Which I think go back to an RSA that I cannot quote off the top of my head. Uh, the select board would have to sign off if it is, if the town is making the grant application.
Right.
If the planning board is making the grant application, then the board has to vote on it. And that vote has to be recorded.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying. We might be, it might be nice if we get the blessing from the select board for us to go and do it.
On the flip side, right, at the end, once you go to receive the funds.
They are the.
Right, and so just as a, hey, this is happening, instead of being like, wait, how'd we get this? We're trying to change the process a little bit, just to be like, this is the how and the why, and very reasonable, right? So you're gonna see this when it comes to get approved and you're gonna, the expectation is, the majority of the board is gonna be like the same, and they're gonna be like, oh, right, we know what this. Just to kinda give you that flow.
Right, and if this look what goes on record, they're supporting.
Right, exactly.
Along with the planning board's proposal.
Right, it's still ours, we're just saying, we're just making them aware of it, that you don't have a problem with us going to get money for you, do you?
Yeah, um.
Do you wanna, someone wanna make a motion, like, if, that the planning board approves that if it's, you know, more expedient or whatever you wanna say?
I, I, I think from, from a, a, a time point of view, because the deadline, the cutoff for applications. Is like the third week in January, if I remember, for this particular grant. And I'd like to run it by the committee for an informal review. By, before the end of the year, so that in case, in case they have. of the year, so that in case, in case they have suggestions, there's time to implement them and go back and forth a couple of times.
Yeah, and just, you know, work with Rob and Ed.
Of course.
What do you want the motion to say?
Um.
It's probably prescribed, Jerry.
I, I would suggest that the motion to say, why don't I make the motion? I move that the planning board, the authorize, or the planning board authorizes to apply, the planning board is authorized to apply for a planning grant from the New Hampshire Housing Authority in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the grant limit for this particular grant. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor? I oppose. None. Okay, so, if it works out after consultation with Ed, that it makes more sense for the planning board to be the applicant, we'll do it that way. If Ed thinks that it makes more sense for him, i.e. the town, to be the applicant, then we go that way. So.
No, he's on right now. He's on right now.
Ed's on right now?
He's been on the whole time.
Yeah, been on the whole time.
No, he hasn't.
That's right there, Enfield Town.
Yeah, the manager.
That's our town manager.
Oh, Enfield Town. Okay. Been in communication with him, he's, he's definitely listening, so.
All right, all right. Ed, if you're listening, I need feedback on that draft that I sent you.
Oh, no.
David, I have not received that.
I've sent it to you twice.
I have not received it, I just looked at my email again.
Okay, I will send, okay, you respond to my work email, so I will send it to you using that address.
A great filter on the sky.
And you will have it tomorrow.
You'll stop by your house at seven, eight?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have to answer.
Carrier pigeon's on its way.
Tell me where you live, I'll drive on there. No, it's ten o'clock almost.
One, one quick question.
Yes.
This is quick. Did we ever get that ten thousand dollars in free cash that the, that the legislature ruled on? They put two million dollars out there and said, it's ten thousand dollars for each town for zoning.
Never saw that.
Yeah, well, they, they approved it, they, they put it out there and said, we're gonna, there's two hundred towns out there, here's ten thousand dollars for each town, all you have to do is ask for it, and it goes towards zoning, and it goes to zoning, changes. And housing, it was the housing one, it goes to housing, including zoning changes, not housing.
That's part of money, I don't know what the state does.
This is different.
It's like glitter, we just give it out.
It was a part of, it was another one on the twenty-five thousand one, because there was like fifty million in total, and they said, we're gonna give ten thousand each town, all they have to do is ask for it.
I know, I know there was a hundred thousand, I'm figuring there somewhere.
Yeah. Hundred thousand is for the changing of the zoning, that's right, excellent, the grant for the venture housing, right?
Was it?
Yeah, we're gonna apply every. That's okay. I will take back your envelopes.
Okay. Any old business, any new business?
I make a motion, be adjourned.
Okay, we adjourn at nine fifty-four.
Yeah, you beat the ten o'clock call.
I know.
Thank you, Adam.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Ed.
Oh, yeah.